Call the meeting to order, City of University Heights Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 14, 2019. The council is all present, all five are present. First order of the business, approval of minutes of the April 9 regular council meeting and April 24 special council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. The minutes will be approved by unanimous consent. Okay. I call the public meeting, hearing to order on the FY19 budget amendment. If anyone would like to speak, this is just about the public hearing for the budget amendment. If you want to speak about something else, that'll be under public input. So would anyone like to come to the microphone and speak about the budget? Okay, I close the budget hearing. So Steve Kuhl will have consideration of Resolution 1922 adopting the FY19 budget. And do you want to go ahead and speak about what you've done to prepare it?
Yeah, I will. Is this okay here?
Yes.
Okay. I never know. I have a problem with this all the time.
Sounds good, Steve.
Okay, all right. First of all, I'm just gonna take about 10 minutes and go over the budget for this year, what we're amending and so forth. Hopefully, everybody has a copy of the publication.
Well, it's not on the agenda, but I will, or the attachments, but I'll get there. Just start.
Okay, and then I also have the worksheet here. I'm not going to go over this line by line.
Right.
Rather, I'm going to go over the major items here.
Excuse me, but no one got a copy, so ahead of time, should we have?
I think there was circulation of the copy. I think mayor was involved. I was involved. City treasurer was involved.
I got a copy from Steve Kuhl.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know who.
I didn't receive one.
Okay, then.
So she'll get it on the screen, so the council can review it. Apparently, the copy wasn't sent out to the council.
But it was published, right, Steve?
May 4.
Yeah, it was. Formally, we comply with all those technicalities.
Yeah, I sent the worksheet and I don't know, I sent this to
A number of us.
Two or three or four people altogether.
That's right.
Not the full council.
Just keep going, I'll catch up.
Okay. Anyway, the original budget for this fiscal year was actually adopted March of 2018. And at that time, we used all of the information available to us, as well as the best estimates or other information that we could at the time. And the purpose of the amendment is basically to make the final adjustments to that original budget. Some items are due to cost differences. Some items are due to timing differences, such as street projects. We originally budgeted those out to happen during a fiscal year, but either, you know, some circumstances come up, either delays or whatever the case might be, that we have to remove some items from those. So what I'm gonna do is I'm quickly gonna go down.
But Steve, what we want the public to also know, that this budget is required to be filed by all municipalities across Iowa to show how far well we stayed within the projected budget that was adopted almost 12 months ago, or how far away we are from that target. So there are some categories that remain unchanged, some categories that underspent, and we have some other categories that have overspent. And that's really the reflection of this work product is, you know, we said we were adopting a budget for July 1, 2018, closing June 30 of 2019. These are the changes that have taken place since then.
Yeah, basically what we're doing is we're taking, we're taking the final two, expected results for the final two months of this year.
Right.
And adding them on to the actual where we're at.
Right. So for purposes of the public, this is how good or how bad your council was able to estimate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So anyway, on the revenue side, we have, we have a couple of significant changes. First of all, we had, okay, in the miscellaneous revenues, we have, we have an increase of The bulk of that change was the proceeds from the Olive Court lots. Okay, there we go.
I'm just gonna sit on your ear for a while, so go ahead.
You just stand there and hold it?
Yeah, pretty much.
She's holding it.
Okay, so we're looking down the middle column there, current amendment. Line, this would be line 12, miscellaneous, we have an increase of $249,000 there. What that increase pretty much covers is the $246,000 plus received from the Olive Court lot sale. We did not even have that in the budget a year ago.
That's right.
Okay.
Maybe you want to sit here?
The line above that, special assessments, the original budget amount of $48,000, that's based on, as if everybody, each person that's assessed for those, if they pay the same amount over the 10-year period or whatever, every once in a while, you get some people that are gonna pay more. And so we've actually taken in about $83,000 or so in special assessments this year. So we're bumping that up to $85,000. The last item in the revenue.
That special assessments pays for the bond on the streets project at this intersection, right? Is that what that, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, just to make sure I understand.
At least some of it.
Yeah, not all of it. City ended up paying some of the portion of that. I think that's the sidewalks that that covers, and I can't remember what else.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Okay, Steve, we can continue.
Okay. We have also in the revenue section is other financing sources, which basically is bond proceeds. The original budget of $254,500 was for the Olive Court project, and that project has been delayed out until next year. What we're adding on is $296,000 plus. That is to bring that total up to $550,699. And what that is, that's the proceeds of the Swisher bond last.
Right, and that's income that's sitting in our general account right now. But it's borrowed money, it's not property tax money, it's not anything else. It's not true property revenue.
Okay, so until the pictures back up, so those are the major changes on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, the expenditure side is where the budget compliance is actually measured from, in these nine categories, like public safety, public works, and so forth. The budget compliance is only the grand total number of each section, so we're not measuring budget compliance on each item on the worksheet, but rather each function. I'll just quickly go down the list here. Public safety, we are reducing that by $33,000. The bulk of that is the reduction in the expected payroll and payroll taxes and benefits for the police department due to the turnover. That reduction is, was about $31,000 out of that $33,000. The remainder of the items in the public safety, there's not a lot of variance overall, both at the line item and also, you know, depending on, you know, whether it's fire or building, building inspection and so forth. Let's see, public works, we have an increase of $7,800. What that is, we have
You mean public safety?
We have an increase, we have an increase in engineering fees due to a couple of large projects coming up and so forth. We also budgeted for several modest street improvement projects, local panel replacements, asphalt projects and so forth. The information that came from Josiah was that even for those projects that have started now or are expected to be completed by June 30, the city likely will not receive any of those invoices for those projects. So we're actually pulling out probably about $30,000 from this year that'll actually flow over into next year. Let's see, we have general governmental increased by about $115,000.
Yeah.
There are some items included in that. Let's see, we had, for the Swisher bond, we had $10,000 for the bond attorney and then just a little over $7,000 for the financial advisor. Those fees paid this year were not included in the original budget.
But still, this category is still in excess from what was budgeted. Even if we are to remove some of those expenses from the Swisher bond transaction, any of the support that we needed for those transactions, this category is still overblown.
The other, the other major change is on the legal services, we have an increase of about $112,000. The last two increases, debt service increased $13,500. That is due to the first interest payment on the Swisher bond. That was not included in the original budget. The actual money to pay that interest is actually coming from the bond proceeds. That's always built in for the first payment. And then last but not least, capital projects. We had budgeted $350,000. That was the original Olive Court project, which has been pushed back. But what we're doing, we're increasing that category by a little over $82,000, up to $432, just a little over $432,000, and that was the acquisition of the land from the Swisher bond. Other than that, other than those big items, a lot of the other administrative items, general recurring items, such as trash services, library services, all those other items, there's really not a whole lot of fluctuation, you know, between where we're expecting to end up and what the original amounts are. We are projecting surplus this year of a little over $413,000, but that's actually coming from
Olive Court.
The Olive Court lot proceeds, $246,600. Okay, on the Swisher bond, let's see, we took in $550,000, spent $430,000 on the land. We also put down the $48,000 down payment in the year before. We also have the $17,000 for the bonding attorney fee and financial advisor fee. So those are the actual direct expenses. That's on the very last page of my worksheet here, that other than four or five directly identified expenditures, there were still $40,000 that could be spent for, I assume it's like engineering fees or miscellaneous other costs with that bond sale. So we have a little bit left over on that possibly. Otherwise, the rest of, the rest of the surplus, less than $100,000 is actually pretty much due to the timing differences on street projects and the reduction in the personnel costs for the police department.
All right. Are there any questions for Steve? Did you want to comment, Sylvia?
I do. I'm going to prepare some graphs for the June meeting so that we can have a visual translation of what this means. And in part, I'm doing that because we're going to be walking into the July budget, and we need to have an appreciation of resources. They're not unlimited, and I think we dodged a bullet this year because we had some unexpected circumstances in some departments that saved us from further expenditures, as Steve pointed out. But coming up in this next budget, we need to be much more careful and conscientious as a council that taxpayer dollars are just not indefinite. We have budgets to stick to, and that's gonna be important. So I'll bring in some graphs to help us understand that.
Any other comments? Sylvia, do you want to?
I'll motion adoption of the amended budget. Again, this is amended because when you tell the state or the, the state legislative house or the state, you know, what has changed from what we originally proposed almost a year ago.
So this is Resolution Number 1922. There's a motion by Sylvia, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Any further discussion? Roll, I don't know, you're not, maybe we can do a roll call vote.
Oh, sure. Herbald?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Kazada?
Aye.
Okay, carries, 5-0. Okay, thank you very much, Steve, for all your work on this. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. I've also given Chris the paperwork that needs to be filed with the county auditor's office by May 31 at the latest. Sooner the better. We encourage that to be turned in as soon as possible. So, so the copy that the county gets, they can forward that on to the state and get the budget update to the state as soon as possible. So there's one spot on each of the two forms that you and Chris both need to sign, and then she just needs to take publication proof down with the county auditor, and that's done. There is no electronic filing for the amended budget.
Okay. Well, thank you, Steve. Thank you for pointing that out.
It's been a bit of an adventure, so, anyway, so.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
We now have consideration of Resolution 1928 authorizing the mayor to sign in the clerk to attest to a 28E agreement between the City of University Heights and Johnson County regarding seats para-transit services. And Tom Brayce, the director, is here. And did you want to just do a?
Well, we provided the service, para-transit service for Iowa City, Corahville Transits, and the cities that contract with them. Para-transit, right now, we only are charging $25 per trip, which is fairly cheap for para-transit. And so far, year-to-date, we've only done eight trips in University Heights, so about We changed the contract from a lump sum to just be able to do the trips. So that's worked out better for University Heights, I believe, so.
Any questions for Tom? Then consideration of Resolution 1928 is before you.
My motion adoption.
Motion by Sylvia, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie. We need a roll call vote for that, so just go around the room.
Okay. Let's see where this is. Miller?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Kazada?
Aye.
Herbald?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Tom, for coming. We'll get all the paperwork signed into you. Now we have public input. Some guests are here from the public. Would anyone like to speak to the council now? Just come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Back here again to talk about the same exact thing. I'm wondering where you guys are at with the rental permits, the new rental permits. I'm also wondering why it needs to be a nine-month moratorium when a full council of adults should be able to address the problem that was signed as a bill by the governor. I'm just confused what you're trying to do by postponing it that long. I've read that there's now initiatives to try to require new rental properties to purchase certain things in the name of energy, responsible energy choices. And that seems weird because the initial decline of rental permits was in the name of neighborhood stability, not energy. And it seems like you're just trying to shift the paradigm into whatever suits what you want for your own personal needs and interests. I also find it strange that this is something that costs the councils nothing to allow. And I find it strange that we're borrowing tons of money to buy a Swisher tract, which, if I'm not mistaken, is adjacent to your house, right? That seems weird to me. And there's no rental permits being allowed, but you own rental property, is that not correct? Dottie?
One.
Right. So I find it very strange that these decisions are being made when there's clear conflicts of interest, and I'm wondering if there's any progress on that front.
John, we're gonna be speaking about it later.
Okay.
In the, are you, are you planning on staying?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
John, I'd encourage you, as a stakeholder in the conversation, to, to stick around and be part of the conversation.
I'll be here.
Good.
Would anyone else like to speak to the council? Okay, we'll go on to streets and sidewalks, and Dottie's got a discussion on usage in the city of
Okay.
Yes.
There are a couple points.
We better put the microphone.
Oh, yeah, here.
Could you help with that? Thank you.
A couple points that I just wanted to reiterate. And I think Josiah also pointed out that Pelling was interrupted in the street sweeping. And I've had several calls and emails about the condition of some of the streets and sidewalks. And I understand that Pelling is back this week and should be completing that task. And I encourage you to let me know if you are dissatisfied with the work product. The other thing is the water has been turned on for the garden, and everybody should be fairly happy now that there's water for their plantings. So those are just the catch-up points. Now, the point that I want to make tonight and the topic I want to introduce is the bicycle use or the bicycling that occurs in University Heights. We are a bike-friendly city, and that is a good thing. And I'm introducing that this month because this is bicycle month. And the City of Iowa City has a large project introducing different components of biking and, and the uses of such. It is also a very significant safety issue. So I have had lots of calls and emails about biking on the sidewalks and usage, from mothers with children to elderly to joggers who have been interrupted or have been frightened by bikes coming around and signaling or yelling before they, they have a chance to respond. So I'm thinking this is a good time to introduce the topic of bicycle safety again. I have some samples here of signage, which I'll circulate, and I'd like your opinion as to which ones you think would be most effective. The Melrose and Sunset wide sidewalks have been funded by federal grants, and so there is mandatory use of both bikes and pedestrians on those specific tracks. The other sidewalks, which are very narrow and usually about three feet and wide, are part of the city, integral city, and I think cycling on those sidewalks should be discouraged. But at this point, what we want to do is just begin to educate everybody again on the safe use of bicycles. The Iowa City site, which is Chapter 8 in their ordinance, gives direction also, as does the Metropolitan Planning Group, for a website where there is a lot of information about biking, what to, how to take care of your bicycle, how to have reflectors on it, how to repair it, how to use it. It's very simplistic, but it's very good. So it's called Bike Shorts. And there's a website, I'll give it to Lisa, and I would like to address that also with a sort of a bold-faced entry on the website, at least for the month of May, because the Bike Shorts information is, is really very valuable. So I'll pass around the samples that I have found here for safety. And this is also the flyer or the information for the Bike Month in Iowa City and Corahville and North Liberty and University Heights. And I'd like the council to look at the signage and see what, what they think might be of Most focused on Melrose and on Sunset. So let me send these around.
Did you review those with the chief?
Yeah, and Troy and I today went out in the car and looked at the various sites where we would need to have some signage. And he has an opinion too, so he can address that. I think it's important that we educate and not penalize at this point, because it really is a safety issue. And whether it's small children with mom or, or by themselves, or adults, I think we need to be very aware of this. It's a good thing. Cycling is healthy and it's a very positive thing, but I think there is a responsibility there too that everybody who cycles should be aware of. And there are more and more people like that from Oaknall that are walking in New Heights and, you know, sometimes have difficulty responding to a bicycle quickly. So I think it's just a positive thing to focus on the needs.
So you want to get input from the council this month?
Yes.
And then come back with a recommendation?
Yeah, Troy and I were looking on it, at it, and I know that Nick is also concerned. Yeah. Troy and I were looking on it, at it, and I know that Nick is also concerned about signage. And so we'd like to.
I like the simple message, "Bikes yield to pedestrians."
It kind of depends on the street too. Because, and maybe a variety would be good, you know, but I'd just like your. So would Nick.
Is it? I just thought it was the most clean.
Are there any questions for Dottie?
By one, do you need a response from councillors on which item?
Yeah, and streets too. I mean, some streets might.
You want it right now? I mean.
That's what I'm asking you. What's your deadline for this?
You know, you can take more time if you need, but we're interested in.
Yeah, I made up my mind. I like the cleanest one, which is "Bikes yield to pedestrians." It's yellow, should catch everybody's attention, easy read. Especially if you're going thirty, twenty miles an hour.
Yeah, and it depends on which side of the street also. And we noticed that that might be an issue, so. Troy can address that. But if you want to give me your opinion tonight, fine, or, you know, take a week or so and let me know by email or whatever.
I thought the one that said "Slow your wheels" was best, but I don't have a strong opinion. Any of them would be fine.
Yeah, and I thought it'd be good to put our new chief on the spot to speak at the meeting. So I just was talking to him about Ordinance 120 and how it says, "For careful riding, no person shall ride or propel a bicycle upon any sidewalk or roadway except in a prudent and careful manner." And I was just wondering if Troy could talk on that and kind of how he might enforce that or, you know, what. Because I think Dottie raised the concern that I've heard too, that sometimes bikes go really fast on a narrow sidewalk.
In different communities, they've done different things. Dottie talks about the bicyclists giving an audible warning or yelling as they're passing. That's actually a good thing when you're passing at twenty miles an hour, though, as opposed to ten. I mean, I, really, it comes down to being a courteous cyclist on the sidewalk. Some of those signs stress that you need to share it. It's not your free way to use at the expense of pedestrians and dogs. The same things that would apply to somebody walking a dog if they were on a long lead and going from the curb of the street to halfway up to a person's yard, that would also be discourteous, and that would be impeding use of the sidewalk, and that could be addressed. If somebody was riding their bicycle in a reckless manner, and I'm not talking about, you know, a seven or an eight-year-old learning to use a bike and who is unsteady, but somebody who is barreling down the sidewalk and and is doing it with a disregard for other safety, that is something that could be addressed. There is no speed limit on the sidewalks. Pedestrians get to use them though, and their progress can't be impeded, nor can they impede anybody else. It is difficult to enforce when it's totally subjective. For instance, Iowa City has a ban on cycle use in the Commercial Business District. Other communities, and I know this because I did some research and conversation with Councillor Maher, other cities have done that also, where they have said, you know, unless you're twelve years of age or younger, we're going to require you to ride in the street. Some communities have said you can only bicycle on one side of the street. So for instance, the sidewalk on the north side, that's a little bit problematic, I think, for your community in that you have houses on both sides of the street. If your kids are out riding bicycles up and down, which at this time in the evening, that's what's happening if you drive through University Heights. When I came in today, there was a, I'm assuming it was a father pulling a trail behind with a young child on it, and then another young child on their own bicycle trailing behind that under their own power on training wheels. That's what you see at this time of day. During the day, when I'm in my office and watching out the window, you see more commuter traffic. You see joggers, you see people walking their dog, and you see cyclists coming along. And in my experience, a lot of them jump out onto Melrose once they hit Sunset. But when they're coming in from the west and Melrose is a four-lane road, most of them aren't on Melrose, nor is it convenient for them to cross to the wide side of the street, to the wide sidewalk always, if they're coming from West Gate or Emerald Street or any of the rental units that are down there. There is no controlled intersection until they get up to Sunset. So even though the wide sidewalk is on the north side of the street and passes the Athletic Club, some of them actually stay on the other side. And that's where you, when Councillor Maher and I were out there today, there was, you know, like that jogger, there was a person with a dog, and the sidewalks just don't easily accommodate multiple people. So when you look at these signs, there are different sizes. Some are twelve by eighteen. The one that Councillor Kuzada pointed out and liked, that is the narrowest and the tallest. I think when we drove around, and I'm not the sign expert, but I think these would fit on existing signposts that you have out there, the "Welcome to University Heights, City Limit" signs. Since you are putting these up for cyclists that are on the sidewalk, in my opinion, need them on both sides of the street. Because, again, as we just talked about, not everybody rides on the same side of the street. Most of the places, I mean, I think you would require a minimum of six of these, that being on both ends of Melrose as it goes through the community. I'm sorry, eight of these. Both ends of Melrose as it comes into the community.
Sunset.
Sunset as it comes into the community, and probably George as it comes into the community also. In most of those locations, there is a signpost on the opposing side that has either a speed limit or something on there that I think that you could probably tap into. The exception to that is in front of the Athletic Club where there is not a sign on the north side of the road. There is a little bit farther up as you move east into the community. I think these have a lot of advantages. I like some of these other messages, but you're starting to get into a twenty-four by twenty-four sign and a thirty-two-dollar price tag instead of a fifteen-dollar price tag. Again, those are all considerations. I like, again, Councillor Maher, I think brings a good point up that maybe at various points in the community, perhaps at Sunset and Melrose, you'd like to put in another message. But at the very minimum, I think you need to placard as you come in. And Councillor Herbert, that was one of the very first things he talked to me about, is we're not just talking about the residents in the community going door-to-door, sending out flyers, or sending out, you know, delivering letters. Those users really aren't the issue. It's the pass-through users, the people that are commuting to the college or to the university hospitals because they work there. So it's that pass-through that you're not going to reach with those direct mailings. And you want to get information out. You want to get "Slow down" or "Yield to pedestrians." It needs to be specific to bicyclists though, because University Heights has lots of signage already. And if you just, one of the other ones that was forwarded, I think by Emily Bothell.
Yeah, right.
Said "Pass with care." To me, if I'm rolling down the road, that's a.
Could be anybody.
So we can address them. It's much easier to address it when there's a clear message being delivered to the cyclist, and the cyclist isn't able to say, "If I only knew."
Now, Emily suggested mailings, but you see, that is the city of Iowa City, which is more of an, of a circular sort of intact entity. Whereas, like you said, our problem many times is the pass-through. Because that's the problem on Melrose.
And I see the police department's role as trying to modify the behavior and get compliance, not to address these violations, for instance, with ordinance violations, more stopping and educating and slowing them down. Again, educating them and also making the point that if you'd have been riding a little bit more respectfully, a little more, with a little more courtesy, we wouldn't have had this six-to-eight-minute conversation, and you would already be wherever it was you were trying to go to.
So is the council comfortable with letting them pick out between those signs and the appropriate places that he suggests?
And Metropolitan Planning also could maybe help us with the placement too. I mean, you know, Kent and Brad are pretty familiar with this, and they might be able to help us also.
And I would agree with that absolutely. I am looking at the, trying to placard it as soon as people are entering University Heights. To me, that makes sense. But again, I'm not a traffic engineer, and Kent would know. I think that's a very easy, I mean, he can hop in the patrol car with me and we can go take a quick look. I think this "Yield to Pets" that you pointed out is right to the point. I think that it also fits on those signs. When you look at it, the "University Heights" sign is larger. It may be twenty-four by twenty-four. On many of those signs, under it is a smaller, well, either a speed limit sign or a bicycle-friendly community sign. And I think that if you start throwing up at the bottom of that one of these, you know, twenty-four by twenty-four, eighteen by twenty-four sign, it's going to be this big T at the bottom. I don't know, aesthetically maybe isn't the best. And also sidewalks are narrow, roads are wide. I think that there's the potential that a vehicle or a person is going to end up running into them.
I think, Troy, I think if you and Dottie want to go ahead and get this taken care of, that's fine. I don't think we need. All right.
Okay. And I also think, given the budget considerations that are going on, that it makes sense to go with as long as we feel that it's going to do the job, we give serious consideration to
It's fine.
to the least expensive. But Councillor Maher and I and Kent can talk a little bit more about it and move forward.
Can I also bring up ancillary signage issue? And that's only because we're coming close to the end of the year. For Ordinance 235, we agreed to fund a flashing solar-paneled type of a speed-regulating sign. And I don't know where former Chief Nate Pedersen left on that, and I don't know if that's part of, if you could inquire now that we're doing these signages, kind of cluster that around and close it out.
That's a good idea. That's on our separate to-do list, but I don't know if you guys, when you talk to Kent, would want to just factor that in?
I think, yeah, talking to him would be.
And I have been going back and forth with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau on our current grant, trying to come up to speed on where we're supposed to be, but also on our grant for the next year. And those are things that, I'm not sure what equipment we earmark next year's grant for, but that is the type of equipment that would go directly to their mission also.
Amazing, super. So there might be funding if we were to stagger it between end of June or maybe July?
Right, at least offset the cost, correct?
Okay, super.
So we don't have a specific timeline yet on that speed sign, correct?
He's actually going to come down and meet with me hopefully in the next month, so maybe by next council meeting, I can give you more of a timetable.
Right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Super. I just want to make sure that the funding for this, that was allocated for this year doesn't close being unused.
Okay.
So if you can split it, I think that would de-stress this year's budget, because I think we were, you know, anticipating a stress point.
Is that a portable sign that you're believing?
No, I think it was supposed to be fixed. And I'm not sure if Mid-Am was supposed to be involved in that. I just presumed it was moving along. But now that we're talking all things signages, let's try to wrap it up.
And two, I think Dottie had maybe brought up the idea that too many signs can look too confusing.
Yeah, clutter.
Yeah. That's why I think Kent would be additive here because, you know, and if we do need another pole for that by University Heights, that would be just one. You know, it's not going to cost us very much to put these signs up on existing poles. But a new pole is going to be, you know, something, so.
Russ puts the poles in for us too.
He puts the signs, yeah, in the signs. Yeah, yeah.
Also, Mid-American may be able to assist us without us having to purchase a new pole. Utility poles are expensive. They're about $10,000. And you're also inviting all sorts of other users to come onto city properties, which I don't think we have contemplated, and it's not advisable. So I'd rather we connect with Mid-American, whoever is our representative, and find out what options we have under.
You mean on the electric side?
On the electric side.
Yeah, yeah.
For purposes of.
What I was talking about was just.
Signpost.
You know, a signpost for.
Got it. I'm talking about solar. Where we would mount the solar.
Something else.
Okay.
So, but you might want to check up with MPOJC on that one too. But it's on the western entrance that that was designated for.
Enough direction, Dottie, now, right? To continue?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Dottie?
So has L.L. Pelling finished all of town, or do they still have more work to do?
Pelling?
Yeah.
Yeah. I haven't, Josiah could probably answer.
Well, Josiah in his report says they're going to continue.
They're still continuing.
Yeah.
Did you have other stuff, Dottie?
No, I'm finished.
I did want to hear about Triangle Park too.
Oh, Triangle Park?
I don't have any information on it now. I've been talking to Jim, and I don't know if he could give us any information.
So I, so street sweeping, I got an email from Pelling today that they said they were done with the work.
Today?
Today.
They definitely didn't get the end of prospect.
Yeah. So I drove around all the streets here before the meeting, and I've identified maybe half a dozen, six, seven spots that I'm going to ask them about. Some of them, they look like maybe some leaf pickups were late to the curb, and so they're sitting out there, and I don't know if they can pick those up. So if it's okay with you, I'll just talk with Russ. He could get a shovel and a thing, and he could probably clean some of these out. Some thicker areas that I don't know the street sweeper will do a great job on. So my plan is to talk with Pelling about a couple of these areas I noticed, and then talk with Russ on some of these other leaves and mud and stuff that necessarily wouldn't be picked up by the sweeper, so.
So you could tell the street sweeper was there, it just didn't pick up the stuff that you saw?
Some of the bigger piles of like dirt and mud, I think they've built up over the years, or there's like shrubs or trees or stuff that have kind of covered it, so they would have just had to drive around it. I also thought it was interesting, so when I was driving around tonight, going through University Heights, and I'd head out into Iowa City or different areas to come back around, areas that were newer, more recently developed, no trees. The streets were very clean, of course, and so just keep that in mind. Driving around University Heights, there was still stuff in the streets, but it was like, okay, that's all the pink flowers from that tree, that tree, that tree. So it will be different. I mean, it will continue to happen throughout the year, so.
Historically, it was recommended that we wait till the trees blossom and fall. Do you remember some of that? It was recommended.
Okay, yeah, that would be.
But then that puts you into May, and then there's always something. And, you know, so I do know that, you know, some councils have, in the past, have said, "Let's wait," but then the streets were so bad because of the snow this year, I think it was good to be ahead of it.
Yeah, to get the sand.
Because of the sand. But historically, we have waited till May. That's kind of bad.
Yeah, so I will follow up with Pelling on a couple of spots and then talk with Russ, unless there's any other direction or thoughts.
I mean, if you, I guess if you think they did a reasonably good job, and it's just a Russ thing, if it's just more efficient to have Russ just go clean up some spots, I guess, is that a possibility, or do you think that they did something wrong? L.L. Pelling did something wrong?
Well, it may be a good idea. If Russ could go out there in an hour and shovel up and be done, be done with it, then maybe we'll have him go first.
Otherwise, this wouldn't be the second, this wouldn't be the first time that we've had requests for resweeping.
Yeah. It's hard for me to tell, for one. They did some in April, and they came back in May and finished up. And like I said, you know, you could sweep it in April, and then we could have four weeks go by and rain and leaves and trees, and there's going to be stuff back in there. So I wasn't there when they did it.
Right.
So I can't really tell you.
Can I, can I just make a recommendation on this process? Every time that we're doing something like this, it seems like we have complaints about the city service that was provided, but it doesn't come up until the next council meeting. I think it would be much more productive and efficient if we had city maintenance, which would be Russ, to do a sign-off for any of these, for any of these services. So every time we do sweeping, which took place, you know, when we had better weather, have city maintenance drive around instead of the city engineer, because your cost per hour to do that is higher than Russ's one hourly rate. And he lives locally, so have him sign off on the service and say, "This is, you know, adequate or sufficient and subject to council comments. It's good enough for city maintenance." Otherwise, there's a huge time gap by the time you're coming in and making a call on whether the service was rendered properly or not. And I just think that this is a better process, is to have somebody on staff immediately go out and sign off, or not. Any thoughts on that, Virginia? Dottie? I just think it'd be better to have probably a council person do that sign-off rather than Russ, because I'm not sure if he.
Might as well let him learn, yeah. Because council, flexible. I mean, it just depends. You know, some are able to do it and some are not. So the one consistent person is city maintenance. And then the person who is, streets and sidewalks, should at all times, you know, be held accountable for those sign-offs. So if there's any issues, they need to coordinate.
Maybe he'd be more consistent too, if we. Maybe he'd be more consistent too if we gave him direction.
Yeah.
And checked on him and.
Yeah, absolutely. So if there's guidance, if there's consensus, I think we need to adopt this as a policy. Otherwise, it's putting the city in a position where we're being very picky on services that took place almost, what, three weeks ago or two weeks ago instead of 24, 72 hours ago. And, and, and just out of fairness, I think we need to be.
And other comments on that? Thoughts? I guess we could look at that as we move forward.
Well, I'd like to give some direction to, to the city engineer so he knows what to expect. Why wait for another meeting?
Well, I think it's a good idea. I mean, maybe just to do on a case-by-case basis. Like the next time something comes up, just, you know, if it's another whatever, just say, who can handle this this time? Should we get Russ to do it? I don't know if that is a good blend of the two ideas. If a counselor can do it, that's great, you know, but if not, then maybe have Russ do it or something.
Yeah, and, well, the reason I said I think it would be better if he did it is he would be consistent, whereas all the council people would have a different perspective and a different view, you know, depending upon where they lived and all that. So at least, you know, he would be the person to go to. I think it would be a good idea. I also, you know, I know that we, I don't know whether we're picky or whether the job isn't being done correctly, you know, because I'm not in the business of street sweeping. So I don't know when I get a call.
I've had that thought myself and I don't, I'm not in the business of street sweeping, but I have followed behind street sweepers in some of the adjacent cities because they have their own sweepers and city staff. And I've, whenever I see one, I kind of go come back around and I've taken a look at it recently. And they go by, the street is not like pristine. So it, it can get what it can, but there's still stuff left behind, I guess, in some other cities that I've seen, so. And like I said, with University Heights, the older streets and the mature trees everywhere, I just kind of also noticed that that happens like every day, you know, so. When I, when I drove around today, I did mark up a couple of spots, but in general, I thought they looked.
And there are also streets without, without curbs. So, you know, where does the sidewalk begin or where does the street end? And the, and the green space begin, you know, I mean, it's.
So I, I guess in summary, I thought they, it was pretty decent.
Sorry, quick question. Do, those other cities, do you think they, they do it more than once a year?
Yeah, because they own the.
That might be part of it too.
They, they could. I know, I know some of the bigger cities, they do it basically around. It takes them all year just to get to everything between their other work that they're doing, so.
I want to add that there's some gouges on my street where it's taken sod out. You know, and you could see the round blade of the brushes. I mean, the brushes, not the blade, but their bristles. Did you notice that in any other areas or is that just on my street?
I haven't yet.
Well, did you notice my street?
I did notice her, yeah.
I sent some photographs?
Yeah. I, I did not see any others like that.
So they just picked on the mayor's house?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So for right now, you're going to follow up. And then in the future, case-by-case basis is what?
And we'll have Russ go scoop out places like the end of Prospect where there's like a pretty good couple inches of sand buildup.
Yeah, and there's some other areas, like I said, where it's like leaves and mud and.
Dottie, would you mind following up on these, you know, the mayor's house and what's being addressed right now?
Yeah, with Pelling, I mean, with Pelling, yeah.
Yeah, with Pelling and then also with city maintenance?
That has deposited there.
I'm sorry.
I know, there's a couple conversations. Dottie, did you want to comment to?
Well, I, I will meet then and figure out how we're going to handle this.
The inspections next time, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I submitted a written report. I'm just going to touch on a couple of things quick to bring everybody up to speed. There was a couple items about utility work in the right-of-way. And one's for fiber optic that's starting this month in May. So you're going to see some construction equipment putting underground fiber optic conduits around town. The city of Iowa City's fiber optic project, that contractor has been doing cleanup of areas that they tore up last year and re-seeding and topsoiling. I think they still have some of that to do actually this month. And then the other item was about the university club or the athletic club is being demolished. And I think that's probably going to happen in June. They will have some work in the right-of-way when they get done with that project because they're going to replace the sidewalk, the wide sidewalk, and one of their driveways that they're going to be using during the demo work. So they're going to replace that.
What's that going to look like after it's demolished?
They're going to, their plan is to leave the parking lot as it is. Basically up to the tennis courts level. That parking lot will stay for now. And then the tennis courts and the building and everything in the back, the pool is going to be graded and seeded.
Is it going to be mostly just a golf house or more than that?
It will be nothing when they get done. It'll just be seeded, except for the parking lot, pending whatever, whatever they decide to do with redevelopment, which is unknown at the moment. But they, they're going to keep the parking lot for sure. Let's see, working on an issue with the traffic signal at Melrose and Kosher. Hope to have that figured out shortly. The MPO evaluated a crossing, the pedestrian crossing up here at the Melrose and Sunset. And they're going to make some adjustments to lengthen two of the pedestrian legs. They were a little short, a few seconds short. And that's about it as far as the report goes.
Do we have any plans for any more pothole patching this summer, spring?
Yeah, that's ongoing essentially. With Russ going around.
So like Sunset is going to get done.
Yep.
How about streets, striping at the intersections of Melrose and, Melrose and Sunset and Melrose and Kosher?
Yeah, so that usually comes out next month.
Okay.
So that they have the summer to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Josiah?
I have a more thing. Go ahead.
Could you stay around until Jim Glasgow gives his report too?
I know, I printed this off. I know there was some discussion about sidewalks and things in town. And I remembered this, where I left the, the MPO in past years has done some maps and things for the city. And in 2012, they did a sidewalk map, which gives you a good view of the town and where sidewalks are and aren't. So I'm just going to pass out a copy for everybody, just as for reference.
Thank you.
Did you have something else, Mayor?
I didn't.
Okay.
Very good job. Thank you. Okay, thanks very much, Josiah. So we'll go to the mayor's report. And first order of business is swearing in of police chief Troy Kelsey. And it's an honor and privilege to do that. Could you join me up at the podium there? Chief?
I'm trying, we're going to share this.
All right, where do you want me?
We're going to share this microphone, so we're going to talk loud.
All right.
All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Troy A. Kelsey, do solemnly swear.
I, Troy A. Kelsey, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the commission, the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Office of Chief of Police for University Heights, Iowa.
Of the Office of Chief of Police of University Heights, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, Chief Kelsey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to see you in a uniform too.
I had to kind of piece it together. I feel like I'm swimming in itself.
I've been talking to, I just want to say a few words because I've been talking to many colleagues when I go to meetings this past month and talking about our new police chief proudly and what the council has done to bring you here and vote, vote you in. And I'm so pleased with it. And I wanted to tell a little story that I also talked to my friends and neighbors. And when I was talking to a friend, I said, you might know him, he's Troy Kelsey. He, you know, he was a captain for Iowa City and he has quite a career. 32 years, he started in Corvail. Then he went to Iowa City and became, and went through the ranks as sergeant, commander, lieutenant and captain. And even served interim police chief for Iowa City. And he retired about six months ago as captain. And she said, wow, that's pretty good. He's got a lot of experience. But I just have one question. I said, well, what's that? And she said, is he a Hawkeye fan? And so I want to assure everyone that Chief Kelsey is a Hawkeye fan.
Attending and graduating.
Anyway, thanks so much.
Thank you.
And so the next thing is consideration of resolution number 1923 approving Johnson County, countywide hazard mitigation plan. And this was included in the legal report. And do you have any questions about it or?
Mayor, for the benefit of the public, can you give us just a brief summary?
Well, yes, this is done by countywide so that, to mitigate hazard in the county so that we would be eligible for FEMA money, for state money in case of a disaster. And this plan was done by Johnson County and represented all the cities and all the cities had to participate. The plan has been approved by FEMA and the state. And now it has to be approved by each city by resolution.
I motion adoption of this resolution?
Okay, motion by Sylvia, is there a second? Second by Dottie. Roll call vote.
Maher.
Aye.
Casada.
Aye.
Herbald.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Carried.
Okay, and I see Jim Glasgow's here for a hotel project update. Thank you for coming, Jim.
I'm going to start with Triangle Park first. The drinking fountain hasn't come in yet and it's, it's a special color. So they said it was going to be a three-month lead time. I checked with Ferguson Supply and it's, it's not in yet. But that's actually the next thing that will go in at, at Triangle Park. And that requires a concrete footing. We did install the new water meter with Joe Nelson and that'll get a ground box so that it's all going to be flush with the ground and, and all you'll see is a fiberglass lid. And, and the meter and the backflow device will be under, underground. And then I'm going to be working with Dottie on kind of keeping you updated on when the drinking fountain, everything else is going to come in, so. As far as the hotel goes, we have been really working the last month with banks and title companies. And all you lawyers know, all the abstracting and title opinions. We, we had a lot of discrepancies over there because we're going clear back to 18. I think the, the farthest back we went was like 1839. We, we had some discrepancies between the railroad property and, and the hotel property. And we, I think we've got all those worked out with the, the county and the, and the lawyers and everybody. So we are planning on a groundbreaking on the 22nd. So we'll be sending you the email out for that. It's, doesn't, the weather doesn't look good. Like it, we haven't had much help all, all year here so far. But we will have a tent there and Big Ten Rentals is one of the investors in the hotel. He's going to supply a tent and then.
So you want the mayor and the council there if they can?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll email, we'll email you everything.
At 2:00 PM, I understand?
Yeah, 2:00 PM on the 22nd. Peter Harmon from Gray's Restaurant is, is going to be there too. So there, I'm not guaranteeing you there's going to be something to eat, but there very well could be from him, so. The, the general contractor that we hired, I'm not going to say who it is yet, but, but they, we've, we've got that. The contracts are just now getting, getting signed. The, the first phase of construction really is going to be a lot of groundwork. I mean, you're, you're going to see about two months of just big concrete work. It'll, it'll take us probably two months to two and a half months to get up to the, the second story. The, the building is mostly concrete until you get to the second story. And then it goes steel construction from there. So that will all start relatively quick. The, the first phase though is, is really, there's some drilling rigs that'll come in and bury a lot of stuff underground and some, some support structures underground. So it won't look like much is going on, but there is quite a bit that will be going on. Other than that, that's, that's kind of where we stand right now. I think things are, things are moving, moving forward real well. We hope that we're going to get some good weather here. But it's, it's been, it's been tough construction for everybody so far this year. But like I say, the 22nd is, is, and Greg will be bringing, bringing you up to speed on, on all that. So I, I think we're ready to go, so.
Any questions for Jim? Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 22nd. I wanted to add that I'm planning an open house to invite residents in the greater community to a meet and greet of Chief Kelsey. This is on Thursday, May 30th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM here. And the restaurant coming to our new courtyard Marriott, currently known as Gray's, and Peter Harmon will be catering the event. And so it's May 30th, Thursday, May 30th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And I'm sure several other police officers will be here too. And I hope everyone comes. It'll be a wonderful event. And I hope the weather's good there too. We worked a long time to find a date that worked for everybody. So I hope that works for you. As there, is there any other questions or concerns? We'll go to the legal report.
So the first thing is consider, third consideration of ordinance 237, which makes changes to the city's right-of-way ordinance. This relates to the small wireless facilities, among other things. The Verizon representatives last month were here. I've been in communication with them. They, they want some changes. They'd like to see some changes additional to the ones that we're making so far of this ordinance. And I've, I've talked to them about that and told them I'm going to suggest that the council go ahead and have the third reading of this ordinance and then I'll get with them about additional changes they may see. And so you, this may not be the last time you hear about this issue, but this is the third consideration of ordinance 237.
Fair motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dottie. Discussion?
Steve, I'd like to see a red line of what contemplated changes they're interested in.
I, I sent that to you today, actually.
Just today? Okay.
Yeah, so if you didn't get it or if you have other stuff else, let me know.
I'm just discovering that there's a lot of council documents in the junk folder. So my apologies to those of you who are wondering why some of your stuff is in my junk folder. And Chief Trey Kelsey, some of his reports are there, so I'm pulling them out as I'm finding them. So I'll, I'll look out for it.
You bet.
Roll call vote.
Casada.
Aye.
Herbald.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Carried.
The next item is resolution 1924. So from time to time, when the city has borrowed money for Swisher Tract or different street projects or other things, there's this whole series of bond documents that the bond lawyers and the bond financial. and the bond financial people in my office look at, and the council approves. Among other things, there's an officer or an entity called a registrar and paying agent that's identified that kind of is where the bond payments are made by the city, and they handle the disbursement of those funds and so forth. Anyway, those documents say that, you know, if the bond, the paying agent, registrar changes names or changes businesses, then there could be an assignment of those duties, and that's what's happened here. The Bankers Trust Company, which has been the paying agent and registrar for various City of University Heights municipal financing facilities, as they call them, has sold its commercial bonding business to an entity called UMB Bank. And so we got the notice from, the city got the notice from Bond Council, John Danos, and from Bankers Trust saying, you know, the council should consider and adopt the resolution that changes the registrar and paying agent for the city's municipal bonds, and that's what...
So I'll motion adoption?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Sylvia, second by Dottie. Discussion? Roll call, vote.
Herbald.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Casada.
Aye.
Carried.
The next item then on the agenda is Resolution 1925, which talks about outdoor service area that's been requested for approval for a bookstore that's going to be located in One University Place. And I tried to outline the considerations and what I understood Katie and Nick Herbald were proposing, and then I drafted a resolution that will be before you, but yeah.
Hi, Katie. Did you want to speak before?
Oh, no. I just came up in case you had questions.
Okay, very good. Does council want to make a motion, and then we'll discuss it?
Yeah, I'll motion adoption, Resolution 1925.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Sounds great. It's like the kind of thing we've been wanting for that space.
What is the bookstore? What's that going to be?
What is it going to be? It is going to be a children's bookstore primarily and a coffee shop, which will also have ice cream and pastries. And it will be a space for families to come and get coffee and buy gifts and have an enjoyable time.
So it will be taken inside at night?
It'll be inside, but there will be outdoor patio space in front of the building.
But it won't be out there after closing hours, will it?
The patio will be open as long as we are open in the hours, correct?
But the kiosk?
The kiosk will be removable. It will not stay outside. No, I don't want to leave it outside overnight.
Okay, so you'll have certain hours whereby it will be outside?
It will not even be outside all day. What I am asking, I'm asking it for permission to have it mostly on busy days where I don't want all of the traffic coming through the store if they're just there to grab a quick coffee, and I'm not even foreseeing myself getting this kiosk in the immediate future. I just want to have permission to make this space work as I grow and get into the space and find out more what I need.
So you just want to reserve this as an option?
Yes, an option to make this space work, yes.
And it's a portable item?
It's a portable item.
So it's not fixed?
Nope.
It's not going to be out there. It's also not very large, so it's also not an attractive nuisance, so it's not hot?
Nope.
And has to be left there to cool down?
Nope. It's something that will be safe for children because it's in children's bookstore.
And you do have a storage option?
We do have a storage option.
Okay. I motion adoption.
Any, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, good.
So any other discussion, any questions? Okay, roll call, vote.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Casada.
Aye.
I'm going to assume you're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would suggest that the minutes reflect that Councilmember Herbald stepped down from the council table during the discussion and consideration of this resolution, and obviously in light of the clear conflict of interest, didn't participate in the discussion or the vote.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
That's all. I think my other items...
Are there any other questions for Steve on anything? Okay, we'll go to the clerk report. Chris?
So I sent out my usual clerk report and the updated building permit spreadsheet. Happy to entertain any questions after the meeting, if you have any. And I have two items under my section, one being the Stella liquor license renewal, everything. I am waiting on one piece, so this will be slightly conditional, but I anticipate no problems whatsoever. So I would like to have consideration for renewing that from the council.
I motion adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Sylvia, second by Virginia. Let's see, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
And then the second item I have under my section has to do with the redesign of the city website. We hope to have our forms, our rental permit, our building permit, the ability to pay parking ticket fines, Marietta parking, you know what I'm trying to say?
Permits?
Stickers. Permits, thank you. The ability to pay those online, and we currently are with Square Inc., and we are hoping to move to a company called Revo Pay, who is affiliated with Midwest One Bank, which is where our money is deposited into, so it's an easier transaction overall. Luckily, we are actually saving money by doing this switch, if you approve it. We are currently going from, they started out Square Inc. at $40 a month for a fee. They're going down to $2,150. With Revo Pay, we are now down to $15 per month per account. And we're going to have one account right now, meaning police, clerk, city, we will all share until it becomes such that we have a huge volume and we need to switch. We also will have a $129 setup fee. We will have the ability to have multiple people who can actually get into the system to look at reports, whereas before, under Nate Peterson, we were charged $15 per user license. So again, we are saving money. The good thing is, like we are currently doing, we are passing the fee on to the person who is using the credit card, and we will have the ability to do ACH, i.e. payments from your checking, savings, et cetera. So I hope that all of you are in favor of this. I think it'll be a wonderful thing for our website. One thing to note, we will not have to worry about any cash handling issues because we are going to have a link that takes us to a secured site on their website, so no hosting issues on our site.
Does Revo Pay generate receipts for any of these transactions?
We will have receipts and we will have reports.
Because that's one of the big things that many of the rental permit holders complain about is that they don't have a receipt, so I'm glad that that is a solution in this technology.
So consideration of Resolution 1926.
I motion adoption?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Sylvia, second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Sorry, I was writing, Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Casada.
Aye.
Herbald.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Carried, and thank you.
And then we have the treasures report, and you sent around the warrants today, and then you updated them, and everyone was able to review them, I hope. Are there any additions that you know of from there or corrections?
I motion adoption of the warrants?
Well, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent.
Okay.
And we won't, we'll do it by unanimous consent. Thank you, Sylvia.
I have a comment to make under city treasurer. Can we bring up a finance item, which is discussion of reinvesting a CD that matured on April 20th?
Sure.
That way Lori is here and if she wants to step away after this one, that's fine because it'll be wrapped up. We had a CD that matured on the 20th of April in the amount of $23,312. That date was well after city council met, so we moved the money soon after, I think over the weekend or on a Monday, into the newly established money market account that is, I think it's with Midwest One Bank, and it's earning, I think, two...
We already have an existing money market of Capitalist Bank.
So you moved it to that? Okay. So after that, we took out to bid a request from a number of banks in the area for rates for a CD of this amount and up to 36 months and see, you know, what type of offers we would get from competing banks. We received two quotes, one from Bank Midwest One and one from Hills Bank. And the one that carried the highest and best rate was actually a Hills Bank for 19-month special for 2.75 in interest versus the highest amount for two years at most with the comparison bank at 2.30. So I would motion that we adopt the 19-month special for this amount so that it gets rolled over into the CD instrument at a rate of 2.75.
Second.
Okay, motion by Sylvia, second by Virginia. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, a copy of all email threads regarding this bid have been provided to the city clerk for the record. All right.
Very good. Okay, we'll go down to community protection, and I see you sent around a chief report. Does anyone have questions for Chief Kelsey?
I did. Okay, I did want to say thank you for getting the report out. I managed to read it, and I only had a couple of comments, and that was, I didn't understand what the table at the bottom was, so maybe we can talk about headers on that one. Yeah, mine were missing, so that's fine. Perfect, yeah, I see now. I was wondering if for item one, which is the, or actually, yeah, item one regarding the service calls, is there any way that council can be informed of what type of traffic enforcement and service calls are being made? I know that Iowa City has a very itemized tally of types of calls that the officers make, and I don't know if that would be something that we could look into and see if it makes sense for reporting. We've never had it, and I think it would provide us with a little bit more of details as to what type of service calls we're taking care of.
Absolutely. The bottom activity, I moved it to the bottom, but I plagiarized that from the previous report. That was one of the things I was going to ask. I'm certainly not tied to this format. If there's information here that you don't need, I won't do that in the future. If there's information like you just talked about that you do need or would like to see, I can't recall if Iowa City breaks it out by specific violations or by moving violations, non-moving violations, equipment violations, but I can look to see what they do. And see if I can't mimic that. We use the same, we use the same report management or records management system, so we should be able to pull out those same statistics.
Awesome, okay, super. So that was my only suggestion was, I knew we have different technology coming into the game, and so I figured maybe we can query it differently and report it. Okay, awesome. That's the only request I had. And then, of course, the headers. Again, a lot of my stuff was ending up in other parts of my inbox.
I don't feel the need to rehash all this. If you want to for public record, I can, but I would like to touch on number three that I labeled as gratitude again. I would like to thank the mayor, the city attorney, and council for successfully pitching this opportunity. I thought that I was done and enjoying my motorcycle and running and bicycling, and you made this opportunity very, very appealing. You made it sound very, very fun, rewarding, and you've been super supportive and great to work with up to this point. Lisa was in, I think it was just last week, I was having some issues getting the web page, the staffing changed over. She helped where she could and pointed me to Nate. But anyway, I just, I feel like I've spun my wheels a little bit this last month. That's part of the transition, but I just, again, I want to thank you all. In particular, Chris has always been there when I needed something boring. He's been extremely helpful in particular, so I want to say that. And then I also can't thank Officer Daryl Tucker enough. Daryl was the last man standing. He was your consistency on the department. We've had, before I joined the department, we had some long heart-to-heart conversations. I don't think Daryl's going anywhere. We have a good working relationship. I know during the interview with the selection committee, there was some conversation as to how Chief Peterson brought Officer Tucker onto the department and what expectations were, and we had a conversation about that, and while I didn't make any promises, I said, we'll see where we're going on that. I could not have been at this point in the transition without what Officer Tucker's done, so I can't thank him enough. Kudos also to Nate Peterson. He's not even in the state anymore, and every time I've reached out to him saying, "Where do I find this?" or "How do I get into this particular program?", he's been there. So again, I'd like to thank him. And again, Iowa City Police, if anybody from Iowa City community is watching this or listening to it, they also have been extremely helpful. As was pointed out in the review of the budget, University Heights employee costs are down because we're still not currently up to staffing. Iowa City has helped with those shortages and has helped cover when we haven't been able to send officers or send two officers to it. So again, they're making this much easier than it might have been otherwise. Anyway, those are the only ones that I really want to touch on. The rest, I'll be glad if there's any questions.
Okay, so we'll go on to Nick Herbald's.
Yeah, the only item we haven't touched on is just the Resolution Regarding Meeting Duration. I think we've been doing pretty well with our meetings since this has been brought up a few months ago or however long it's been. So I don't know if anybody has feedback, if it's something that we want to just kind of keep an eye on, or if there are certain changes that anybody would request after kind of trialing this, doing kind of a pilot of it. I'd be especially interested, Chris, if you have ideas based on your experiences, because a lot of this, I think, is to help you get what you need in a timely manner.
I wish you hadn't given me more time to think about it.
Oh, sorry.
But, well, there's one thing that popped in my head. If you have your agenda items early, it does not hurt to send them to me early. I do mark them when I get them in my email. I have the ability to star them so that I know it's something I need to address. So there is a flurry of activity, as you can surmise, right up until the deadline, which is fine. You have until end of business on that particular day, but it's helpful to me to have things sooner to start to compile the agenda. That would be the first thing I would throw out there.
I would suggest we probably continue testing it out because we're about to enter the rental program discussion, and I think that's really going to be the test. And more importantly, I want to make sure that the public continues to know that public meetings and open meetings are respected. Councillors are not working behind the purview of the public eye, and certainly I'm not, and I'm certainly not asking for votes in lining up, what is it, majority counts before I step into a meeting. I think that's what we do here. We have deliberate, difficult conversations, and we, at least, my policy is to have it in the public eye. And I don't want in any way, shape, or form the resolution to be misinterpreted as trying to shorten public discussion around sensitive topics such as rental permits, which touch on property rights and income rights. So I'd like to continue testing it if we could.
Okay, well, I'll kind of keep it out there and see what people think. Like I said, I think, you know, from what I've seen, people are doing a pretty good job, being to the point and not, you know, narrating on and on, so.
The other question I did have for this council, and it's going back to Roberts' Rules of Orders allows cities to do a consent agenda, which is a quick tactical move to adopt a series of reports at the beginning of the meeting. Iowa City does it, North Liberty does it, Corleville does it. If the premise is that we're supposed to be informed councillors who are stepping into our respective roles, and we should know warrants, for example, treasury report, I see no objection to at least starting off with a consent agenda and not repeating ourselves. And if any one councillor has an issue with the consent agenda... not repeating ourselves. And if any one councillor has an issue with the consent agenda, the system itself allows any councillor to pull out an other, a report that otherwise would get voted in quickly. So like, Nick, you might want to provide us with some more research, maybe in June, to, for the consent agenda, at least we can do something in that direction? Is that something you might, you might be interested in?
I think so. I just, to me, a lot of it would be about logistics, you know, how to make sure that everybody's seen it well in advance. Because I think some other entities, you know, they have maybe work sessions or, you know, other meetings that can have a better sense of what, you know, would go on that. And I think for us, you know, whether we develop maybe a default rule that, you know, if it's sent out with enough notice and nobody objects, it would go on the consent agenda. I just don't know, you know, the logistics of that. But that's something I.
Yeah. Because I think the worst-case scenario would be that we start having bimonthly meetings, a second meeting to address the color of the fountain at Tower Court Park instead of policy issues. You know, one meeting for policy issues, a next meeting for administrative issues that require council action.
Well, Lynn, as we, as we get more in, get more into, listen to my language, as, as we discuss the rental problem, we very well may need bimonthly meetings rather than extending them for a long, long time. Because I would encourage a lot of community input on that discussion.
Yeah, I agree. And one of the main goals is just getting meetings done, you know, early. And I, we had 9:30 as the goal in, in this resolution, just so that community members can stick around and not give up and leave before they've had a chance to give input or listen to the debate or whatever.
Any other comments for Nick?
So was there any interest in exploring the consent agenda, which is a practice by a number of municipalities around us? That's at least.
We've had this once before, didn't we? Were there some issues that were raised? And I don't recall what they were.
Well, maybe it's time to refresh and maybe have Nick present.
But I mean, it was discussed. But, you know, this is a new time to discuss.
Yep.
I'll think about trying to integrate that.
Okay. Anything else for Nick? Okay, we'll go on to Virginia's report.
Okay, the first item I have is a request from two homeowners on Sunset to purchase adjacent parcels of the Swisher Tract. Now, I did not circulate a map with this. Maybe that was a mistake. But is everybody aware of what pieces of land we're talking about before we get into this? It's the portion between the two last houses on Sunset and then the portion to the north of that. Now, I made a mistake in my report, and I called these buildable lots. And that is not the case. These are actually not buildable lots. A buildable lot has to have at least 50 feet of frontage space, but it has to be 75 feet wide at the setback. And these are not 75 feet wide. They are 60 feet wide.
One of them, I think, is 65, and the other one, I think, is 60.
Okay. But so anyway.
Yeah.
Neither parcel could have a house built onto it. They're not big enough for that. So I think that's an important clarification. Dave Peterson is here tonight. And in my report, I thought we have two questions to answer. For the portion that's between two houses, my personal view is that this is not very usable space for the public interest. It basically functions as yard for these two houses at current. And I don't see the city wanting to take over maintenance of that spot. For the next space down, the portion that Dave Peterson and his wife are interested in buying, and that is usable space. It's cleared of trees already. It's mowed. The Petersons themselves have been mowing it. It looks to me like a nice place to hold a citywide picnic or that kind of thing. But the property line here goes about three feet from their garage. And so I don't, to me, it's not appropriate to have, you know, a park space that goes right up to somebody's garage. There's some amount of buffer needed there, but I don't really know exactly what that number is. So my idea was that we get input from the zoning commission on that question, because they've done a lot of work on appropriate setbacks and that kind of thing in the past couple of years. But open a council input on that question.
Steve, will you comment on buildable lots?
Yeah, you bet. So as Virginia said, the dimensions of these, you know, what I'm going to call parcels, they're, they're not platted lots. So, you know, if, if the city were to sell these parcels, as I said in my report, there would have to be a subdivision proceeding, which would include a survey, so that there can be a legal, what's called a meets and bounds description. So that, you know, lawyers like, like Jim Glasgow was talking about can say, okay, this is the actual description. But the importance of these, these parcels not currently being platted lots is that the city zoning ordinance said, says that there are certain dimensional requirements. There's a frontage requirement. There's a, there's a width requirement, as Virginia noted. And then there's an area, a square footage requirement for, for lots to be buildable in the city of University Heights. But then there's an exception that says if there's a platted lot of, of records, so if there's a lot in the University Heights official plat that doesn't meet those dimensions, then it still can be buildable. Okay? The idea being that the plat was, was adopted well, way back when. And then the zoning ordinance came around and said, well, you know, we want lots to be this big. Well, there were already a bunch of lots that weren't that big. So, so the zoning ordinance sort of, you know, grandfather's in those platted lots. Then, of course, there's exceptions to the exceptions. And it says, but if you own, if you own the, the house next door to the platted lot, okay, well, then you can't, then, then it's under one ownership. So then you have to abide by all the zoning restrictions. My point is, is that it's important that these are not platted lots, because that, that means that they're not grandfathered as buildable. And as Virginia said, because of their area, or their width and, and frontage issues, width at least, they prob, they are not buildable. Okay? Now, the thing I wanted to say was that when we say that the lot's not buildable, as I said, they're not really lots, but this, these parcels aren't buildable, what that means is that, you know, that they can't be conveyed, sold to Joe Blow, and then Joe says, I want to build a house here. If the, if the parcels were sold to the people who are asking the city to acquire them, it doesn't mean that those people couldn't build on those lots. Okay? So, you know, they're not going to be able to build a separate house. But if they say, gee, we'd like to extend our house, or we'd like to extend our garage, yes, you know, subject to setback and other zoning restrictions, some, you know, the, the people that are asking to build these, or buy these parcels could build on those, but, but of themselves, they're not buildable. They're not buildable lots. That's what I wanted to say.
So Virginia, you were mentioning the buffer. With your tree experience or otherwise, do you have a sense of what you might be thinking would be a good buffer, like even if the city owned it, but then, like, you know, put some sort of buffer in? Or is that what you're saying the zoning folks would look at?
So you're, I guess, yeah, you're talking about like a greenery buffer. And I was sort of thinking more of just like space. And then the homeowner can put whatever in there they want themselves. They can put a fence. They can put whatever if they want to make a distinction between that space and public space. But I was thinking that we would, if we are to sell the piece, we just let the homeowner determine what that's going to look like. The city wouldn't take that responsibility on.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Yeah. I was too. And I was thinking of a lot of things. And I'm going to segment my comments on two, two levels, because we have two different requests for two different reasons. And I think we have, this council's required to keep the goal in mind. It's privacy. At least, am I right, Mr. Stubbs, that you're interested in privacy?
Yeah, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Peterson, you're interested in, in privacy of your, of your property, right?
Right. And having that, that little bit of buffer was part of it. And to be honest, it was an opportunity where this is basically a patch of land. It's half of that little patch of lawn, because the other half of that is really where the Blair Foreman property starts. So it's, you know, we're really, for, for the ease of, sort of the calculation, I had sort of the offer that we had proposed was based on sort of 60 feet or, perhaps 65 feet by 120, which would go down into the woods and the ravine. I mean, we're really, we're really just interested in the little piece of grass there, which is 60 feet by maybe 30 feet, maybe 40 feet. You know, it's really the lawn. I mean, we're not.
So the width is really, the length, long is 60 and it's 30? Because I had it backwards. I thought you were asking to double the length of your property, because your property right now is 75 by 125. I take 125 to be the deepest point.
Right, goes down to the.
Right. So then I thought, are you trying to add 60 to the 75 for a total of 125 feet? Is that what you're trying to accomplish with the proposal? Or did I misread it?
No, you're correct.
I think it's correct.
Okay.
My understanding is correct.
Okay. Maybe a visual would have been really good to have. But for me.
I actually, yeah. Sorry, I didn't include maps, but Lisa put them in there. Thank you.
I went to Johnson County to, to look at the information, myself. But my concern here is that, you know, this is Swisher Tract. The whole entire community was informed that it would be a green space. The use would be restricted to the promotion and protection of a number of, of things such as soil, water, air, the forest. And so I'm, I'm trying to keep to the spirit and to the intent of what we asked the majority of the city to, to, to work with. So I'm trying to come up with a balance of privacy, which I, I think I suggested privacy even well before we brought the Swisher Tract onboard. And a fence was actually recommended by a resident out on West University Heights. And so I'm, I'm interested in seeing if we can balance the interest of privacy without introducing a slippery slope of other members of the community asking for buyouts from the Swisher Tract. Because you have the other trapped parcel that's deeper in Swisher Tract. You also have another parcel that abuts Roy Boyer's property that's already being used. I think there's a sign that says private property, but it's not clear whose private property. So this opens a great deal of precedent that I'm very concerned about. So I, I need to feel comfortable about striking a balance between privacy of, of the resident and, and , and community, and community expectations that everybody relied on and everybody voted on.
My concern, my concern is that we asked the community whether they wanted to purchase the Swisher Tract. And it was a unanimous decision to do that. And we were very fortunate in getting the property at a reasonable price. When we promoted the, the purchase of the property, it was to maintain the integrity of it, to protect the periphery of the city, to keep it from being developed by real estate developers, and to keep a safe space between us and the university and the possibility of their purchase. In, in achieving that, we bonded for this property. The bond is on the shoulders of the citizens of University Heights. I, it's a bigger issue with me. I do not believe this is for sale. Not 50 feet, not 20 feet, not 10 feet. I think it's a precedent. We have made the promise. We have moved into this legal argument and position. And I think it would be a very, very improper, and I would say even illegal, use of the Swisher Tract to sell off parts of it. And as Sylvia said, it's unending. Because one time, one person purchases, it's open the door nelly. And pretty soon, you know, it would be, what argument would you use? Well, we gave it to John Blow. Then why couldn't we sell it to you? So, but the bigger picture with me is, it isn't for sale. For anybody, it's not for sale. The purpose of it was to maintain the integrity of this piece of property and possibly develop it in a sense of using it as a trail, as, as a space that the city could enjoy, that the citizens could enjoy, that we are purchasing and paying for by our bonding. So as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's not, not negotiable.
I was, I was just wondering, are you, would you be interested in using like any, you know, any of the bond money to put like a buffer, plant buffer, trees, something to give them?
A buffer, certainly. Yeah, a buffer.
And that's what, that's where I'm leaning towards is, in order for me to feel comfortable that we're balancing the interest of the entire city with the purchase that we purported to enlist their vote for, and the special request is to create an easement, where we provide an easement of certain.
I wouldn't call it an easement. I'd call it, as, as Nick said, a buffer that the city would put up, that it has nothing to do with individual ownership of any kind at all.
All right. That would work for me, that we, yeah.
What about the piece that's between two houses, though? I mean, what would your vision for that be? Like, you would have the city take over maintenance of that area and have a park space right between?
If it's part of the Swisher Tract, it's part of the Swisher Tract. That is my answer.
Yeah. I just don't think that makes practical sense when you go back there and look at it.
Well, maybe that should have been introduced before the community voted on it.
Yeah. So as for what kind of door this opens up, if, if there was some sort of deal that could be made between the city and the Petersons, Russ Boyer would also be interested, I'm sure, in that same type of buffer. But every other property that abuts the Swisher Tract.
He already has one, though, doesn't he? He already has one on, on this property.
I'm just saying.
No, no, no. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, too.
Okay.
There's already one.
And I'll finish my sentence. So every other property that abuts the Swisher Tract is separated from it by a 50-foot right-of-way, including mine. So everybody else on Prospect, everybody else on the end of Sunset. So I don't think there are, you know, unlimited additional claims out there. I think Russ might want to make a claim.
Yeah, but that's a street. That's a street right-of-way. You can't make the same argument that the right-of-way is going east and west on, on the 309 Sunset parcel.
I'm just saying, I don't think there would be other valid claims, like, and that goes for me, too, you know?
No, I completely sympathize with that three-foot. I mean, I've been a supporter of privacy. So I would, whether, and I think the more consistent.
So is there consensus that we want to get some input from the zoning commission on what an appropriate amount of space or buffer is, or?
I don't think it's relevant.
No, I think what we need is probably to hire that, the, the arborist or the lady who helped us with the, the ravine for One University Place, and ask her to come up with a design that creates buffer and works with the, the Petersons to come up with a mutually agreeable buffer or green belt that, that's amenable to you and that survives the criticism that, you know, we're starting to sell off or develop the Swisher Tract when in fact we purchased it for a community parkland and conservation.
Just think from like a long-term cost management perspective, if we were to sell them 10 feet, make some money, and then say, this is, you know, whatever you want to have this maintained as, is your, on you at your cost versus assuming that cost of maintaining some kind of structure or buffer ourselves.
We're going to have to maintain that property anyway.
It's the city responsible.
And we're going to have the money for it from the hotel. So we have to spend that hotel money somewhere. And maintenance of the property.
Spend hotel money without drumming up additional.
I'm sorry?
There are plenty of places to spend hotel money without drumming up additional maintenance costs.
Well, this is worthwhile. It's their privacy, and I think they should have it.
John wants to comment. Okay. Well, I think you need the microphone, because the sound guy will look at me.
I'm just posing the question, if you were to decide on selling this, isn't it in the city's best interest to put it to auction instead of a fixed price that only suits the adjacent homeowners? So even if that were an option, it should go to auction because...
So that just anybody can buy 10 feet next to?
I'm not aware of it's 10 feet. I haven't seen a map. I haven't seen anything. But I'm saying, it seems like you're clearly invested in this. I, I don't think that that should be shot down immediately because it's not what you want. Does that make sense?
Thank you, John. Yeah. So your recommendation was going to zoning commission.
To get.
And I hear Sylvia doesn't want to do that, and Dottie doesn't want to do that.
I think we have other options that don't even require zoning.
But I haven't heard from everyone.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to work on a side committee to come up with a solution to this.
I think a buffer would fit with the, with the purpose of our purchase, to maintain the integrity of the property, of the Swisher Tract.
At least for the 309 Peterson property, you're absolutely right on that. Separate issue is what to do with the 305 request, which I, I would rather see that. I'd be more amenable to splitting that between the two homeowners so that, you know, one homeowner doesn't end up with twice. homeowner doesn't end up with twice the amount of property versus the other one.
David, I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't want me to, but I'm just curious what you think of that sort of idea. Talking about a buffer on the side of your house that would be, because I understand that if the city has events there, you may have people right in your backyard. And then Sylvia had brought up the idea of splitting the lot between you and your neighbor. I don't know if that's something you're even interested in.
Yeah, I mean, we'd certainly entertain that. I mean, you know, we're going to abide with whatever the city ultimately decides to do. You know, again, as I'd said before, this was an opportunity where we saw that little patch of grass that goes up to where the Foreman property starts. So that's, and that's how we came up with the proposal. So, I mean, that was sort of a starting point, and, you know, certainly we're going to honor with whatever the city decides to ultimately do.
I just didn't want to go in a certain direction if that wasn't even helpful or interesting to you guys.
No, no. I mean, you know, the privacy and having that buffer from, you know, where our, like you said, like where our property ends right now is just outside of our garage. So, you know, having that little extra space that we could have enjoyed was sort of first and foremost in our minds. But if it's a buffer or whatever, I mean, we'll, you know, we'll work with the city as soon as we need to.
And then the idea, I mean, we may have to do an appraisal or something to, you know, to get a real figure in terms of the land in between you and your neighbor. Is that, are you interested in the land on the other side of, Sylvia had raised the idea of splitting that.
Right, right. You know, to be honest, we haven't really considered that because we knew that that was a piece of property that the Stebbins, the Stebbinses have long been interested in. I think they'd even approached the Swisher Estate in the past about purchasing that. So, you know, that's, to be honest, that's a discussion we'd want to have with Bobby and Jim.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, I would be kind of interested maybe in getting a little more feedback with, you know, from the homeowners before, you know, maybe, but then I think the zoning, you know, commission, too, is an idea. I don't have a problem with that either. I just didn't want to go in a certain direction if it wasn't what the actual homeowners wanted, you know, if they weren't interested in it. You know, and I think, I guess I'd be, you know, I think due diligence, and maybe I'm not the one to opine on this, but would probably be to get an appraisal of the property rather than any other calculation, just to-
Well, and I had some comments and thoughts on that, too, because I disagree, you know, just from a dollars perspective, the methodology submitted by both offers I thought were using. I went to the Johnson County website and both, and I looked at assessed property values because, you know, not too long ago, all of us received a tax hike for our property assessed values. So I went back and I looked, and, you know, one property is worth 133,000. That's raw land, no structure. And the other one is worth 112,000 raw. So we're talking a pretty high dollar amount when you looked at assessed value. But when you compare it for what we got it at auction, totally different ballpark. The auction was a fluke. We were never intended to get that dollar. I think we were lucky. Remember, we went out and we asked the people to vote 1.8 million or 1.5 million.
And they agreed.
And they agreed, because we were willing to pay 1.5 million. The fact that we got it for what we did is a huge blessing. It's a huge windfall. I mean, I'm just doing cartwheels every time I remember how well we did at that auction. So I don't think it's a good comparator of what the value of the property is. But more importantly than that, I'm not after the dollars. This is piddly squat dollars at the end of the day. I am more worried about what are we doing by opening up the sale of the property that was, that was sold to every voter from across the, across, you know, the 15 different streets that make up our city. We told them, this is going to be conservation. We're fighting for conservation. No development, no university, no, nobody, just you, the people of University Heights, and that's it. So I'm trying to balance that interest with the balance of privacy. Because three feet between property lines and a park, I'm concerned about that.
See, it could be solved by having a buffer that the city would pay for and take all the private ownership out of this. It's a city issue. We have the money. We can extend the bond, and we don't have to rely on the hotel money for this.
Okay, that's a good point.
And put a buffer around it, because that takes care of privacy. It takes care of everything. And it's our responsibility, not, because otherwise, you're in the business of real estate sales. That is really what it is. Call it what it is. You're getting an appraisal, you're figuring out what it's valued at, and you're selling it. I can't go with that.
We did get word from the Johnson County assessor that the parcels are valued at $33,840 each.
Well, it isn't a relevant issue. It simply should not be sold.
So I'm hearing that one of the suggestions is getting more information.
From what? On what? On what issue? Because it's a policy issue right now.
On what the property owners-
Want to do.
Want to do.
Why?
Because I'm hearing, I'm hearing feedback from the council about what we don't want to do, but I still don't want to just drop this. I want to hear what the concerns are and try to address them. Maybe it's in a different way, you know, maybe it's, I mean, that's why I asked the question about the buffer, if that could help. I mean, I don't think we should just drop the issue.
I agree, yeah. I mean, we may still end up with, you know, coming up with a buffer anyway. So, but conservation, I need to really balance the conservation with the privacy and-
Okay, so what information do y'all want? From who?
I would just be curious to hear from, you know, from Barbara, you know, if they, I mean, their issue, I think, is they've been maintaining that area. I'm hearing feedback, I guess, different feedback, that maybe we don't want one person to have the entire lot, so I just didn't know if it was the entire parcel. So if it's the idea that-
I think because it's not, yeah. Because it's not buildable, I don't know if that-
It increases resale value of Virginia. Bigger home, bigger lot, more money.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, I think there was some fear that they would then, like, flip, you know, flip that lot and build a new house on it or something.
Well, I was going to say, anything that's ever done with this land needs to have huge covenants that restrict, you know, buildability, cementing, football game day parking, whatever, you know, needs to be restricted.
Okay.
But, you know, that's, it needs to be consistent with conservation.
And I don't know if we've made any contact with the Foreman, you know, group.
Not yet.
No.
We're actually waiting for good weather to talk to him. I've talked to you about that a little bit.
Gotcha.
And I'm still planning on doing that, to purchase that from Dr. Foreman.
If you can purchase that, you-
Okay, Dottie.
Yes.
I like a challenge.
He has refused and refused and refused, yes.
But, you know, it's different times.
Maybe the two of you want to reach out to the homeowners before the meeting.
Different circumstances. Who knows?
Yeah.
Who wants to do that?
Because I tried.
I mean, I think both of you probably should.
So do you have enough direction, then?
Oh, we're going to do an outreach.
An outreach?
Yeah.
And that's going to be done by Virginia?
No, Nick.
No.
Okay.
I don't like too many cooks in one kitchen.
Well, just want to know who, so we can go from there.
Moving on.
Okay. So then we'll go to the next resolution number 1927 you wanted to talk about.
Yep, a motion adoption, resolution 1927, which sets the price for garbage services per single-family home at $13 per month, which is the garbage collection fee plus a 25-cent charge for the billing. And that leaves the recycling fee to be paid by the city out of the general fund, as has been precedent.
So in your motion, it's $13.
Can you run those numbers again? 19 what?
The charge residents will see on their bill is $13 per month. That's 1,275 for garbage collection plus 25 cents billing.
And then for-
The total charge that we pay per household is 1,850, well, yeah, 1,850. So the $5.75 that we pay in recycling fees will still be paid for by the city, as has been precedent.
So your motion is for $13, and there was a second by Lisa?
It's the resolution, yeah.
Okay. So, discussion. Roll call vote.
Maher.
Aye.
Kasana.
Aye.
Herbald.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Carried.
Okay, and then, is there any other questions for Virginia? Okay, we'll go on to finance and we have-
We need to discuss-
Do we have something else?
With Stan.
Oh, there's a little dash.
Yep.
Discussion of council priorities for issuing new, oh, yes, and Stan is here.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, my goodness. Sorry, Stan. Yeah, did you want to start?
Yeah, so I included some notes in my report. Stan's note is tacked on to the end of the clerk report. I hope everybody saw it there. You know, we just need to consider what kind of standards we want to have on newly issued rental permits. My personal experience with this is that we rented two different houses in University Heights. The first one, we lived just up the street from John on Leamer, and my husband was sick the entire time we lived there. He couldn't sleep in the master bedroom because he couldn't breathe at night because there was so much mold in that house. That's not unusual for a university, I mean, you've been in all roads.
There's moisture issues, and I'm not going to sit here and say that we're going to be able to legislate it, but it's something I think we need to take a look at and see what's out there.
The second house we lived in, and the upstairs, the railing around the upstairs has gaps this big between banister railings or whatever, and I had a one and a half-year-old at the time. So before we even moved in, we had to go in ourselves and put extra rail things in there so our one and a half-year-old didn't die by falling through the openings. Now, that kind of thing is now covered by the IPMC.
That's correct.
But the first issue at my house on Leamer is not, that house, I'm sure, is still making its residents sick, and that's the kind of thing that we need to be thinking about.
And I'm not saying that's going to be an easy endeavor, but I think it's something that we need to take a look at and explore.
And I think when I was zoning chair, we sat down and had a conversation about mold or placing windows, because the other thing that we're seeing is even the Olive Court homes that were deeded by the hotel group to the city in January of 2018, some of those homes had plastic film trying to conserve energy. And these were graduate students. I think one couple was a medical team living in really poorly, in a real poor situation. And there was a third, there was a third roommate, and I just felt really bad for them. I'm like, gee, you guys are future doctors of America living like this, you know? That's quite a bit.
Stan, I have a question about other, like Iowa City or in Corvill and North Liberty. The older houses, like, you know, many in University Heights that are 50, 60, 70 years old. How do you quantify, like, the mold issue in those other dwellings?
It's going to be difficult, but I think, I think what I'm asking for is just some guidance of what is important. I would prefer it, I actually insist that it be in writing, just so we can get something out there, so we can react to that. This is the start of the process. I want some guidance from the policymakers. We need to seek input from our current residents. We need to seek input from the investors of the community. And then we need to, you know, develop, you know, what we want University Heights residential housing to look like, so.
So Stan, let me ask you a question. That's a big, big onion to peel back. So my question to you is, would it be helpful if council agreed to take headers of those and have special meetings around them? So that as the public knows, you know, the first header is what's the vision of the resident, of their rental program. All we talked about that evening is pure vision of where we're going. Stop the conversation, pick up the next subject at a separate meeting for health, anything that is health-related, anything that might be environmental-related, anything that might be X-related or whatever, and take it that way. That way, there's a menu of fixed dates that residents can attend, instead of having a very long rental program meeting where people come and go, and it doesn't matter whether we, you know, try to keep to a meeting time. It's just, you know, I want it to be more structured so that we have more subject matter.
Right, and that's what we're trying to do. So if we can start out with what's your vision, I put some things out there.
No, no, yeah, and I got that.
If you could respond to that, I can compile that.
I saw the deadline, saw the deadline.
I will bring that back to the June meeting.
So-
We can respect, we can react to what we need from there, so.
Right, because I'm leaning towards having specific dates where we address certain issues. And the organization that gave me that idea, Stan, was Johnson County's budget process. The budget was parsed out in certain segments, and on certain dates, the supervisors only addressed certain things.
Sure.
And no further thing was discussed. And so I'd like to see something like that, so people-
But if we all come up with the same ideas and it's a very limited scope, it might be easier to get to it, so.
John has a question.
Yeah, John, could you come up just quickly? Make, ask your question, or?
I'm wondering, why is this being brought up now? Is this not something that's been discussed for existing rental permit properties?
I think there's a desire to look at our, look at University Heights rental property and residential property holistically. A lot of things have been taken away from the city as far as enforcement. So this is kind of grand vision. Yep, this is all happening. We have a little time here to kind of set some goals of where we want our residential property to be.
So it makes, it's safe to assume that you'll be doing these air mold quality checks with the existing rental properties?
Yes.
So all of them will be under this, this new adjustment? It's not just the new ones?
Well, it's possible that it could be phased in with, starting with the new ones, moving, the older ones will be able to come into compliance at a graduated rate.
Shouldn't they be held to the same standard with timing?
There's different ways to do it.
Efficacy?
Yep, there's different ways to do it.
Right, so I'm questioning the motivation to do this with only new rental permits. That seems like there's a veil there, and we need to pull that back and actually get to the bottom.
John, everybody gets a new rental permit every year, so I'd argue that, I think you're talking about brand-new people who were-
Right.
Left out of the cap because of the cap. I'd put them under the same bucket.
That's just what I'm trying to find clarity in, because-
That's the discussion that has to happen, the council.
Okay, because as it stands, it seems like you're only focusing on the new rental permits as far as people that have not been allowed to have one yet.
No, no.
Okay, if that's not the case, then I don't have a concern.
There's no grandfathering under whatever we are going to be discussing, correct, Stan?
That's all up for discussion.
It's all on the table.
Okay.
Thank you, John. And so you need some direction.
Yep.
Did you want that individually, or did you want us?
Individually, I would prefer, yeah.
Okay, so all counselors at the table understand that they are expected to provide written instructions to Stan by June 1st on what topics are of most concern to them and where they want, what direction they want this to be going. Everybody understands?
I see Nick shaking his head. Is that okay with you, Sylvia?
I read it.
Yes, from Lisa. And yes, from Dottie.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. They're going to give you-
So I think as University Heights, this is a University Heights-centered issue. Other cities are going through it as well. I think you have to be very careful to look at this from a University Heights. This is what University Heights wants for their rental properties and for their residential properties. There's some things that we're going to have to work with, Steve. There's some questions on, you know, is it allowed to have a higher, or to introduce, like, an energy efficiency code into this program? Steve's going to have to do some research on that and get back to me on that. But again, if those things are important, we need to get those out on the table now so we can do our due diligence and make sure that we have rules and regulations that'll work. So we might not address it straight on by mold, but if you address it by air infiltrations and other ways, you're going to, you're going to address the root of the problem without addressing mold specifically.
And so the council used the list from Virginia's report.
That's, those are just examples.
Yeah, I do not mean that to be exhaustive.
Yep.
I mean, those are some of the suggestions.
Those are just some suggestions.
Yep.
And then there's others.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, by June, by June 1st. Okay.
Another issue that came up over the past two days, we received our snow clearing bills from our snow removal contractor. They're well documented. He has provided invoices. Mechanism, do we want the city to pay those invoices? And then we forward everything on to the homeowner to have the homeowner pay the city? Do we want to forward the individual invoice and have them, give them an opportunity to pay the contractor first?
I'm sorry, can you give us more context? Who, why do we have property owner invoices?
Because we had 20 some properties cleared over the winter that they failed in-
They failed to clear their sidewalks of snow and ice. And so we did a sweep one day.
Okay, so didn't we already have a discussion around this and a process? I thought we did, where we would just send it off to the county to assess it on the-
No, you always, you always give the homeowner an opportunity to pay the bill before you assess it. At a point where they haven't paid the bill-
Are we at that point yet?
No, we haven't even sent them the bill. We just got the invoices ourselves.
Got it.
So I'm asking-
Chris, do you have a, a con-?
Poor Lori.
Okay.
Well, I was just curious, I mean, I want to make sure that the provider, you know, is paid in a timely manner and doesn't deter them from-
Doing this again.
Helping us in the future. But if they said, you know, we'll give them 30 days or something like that, it'd be nice to get the easy ones out of the way that people are just going to pay quickly and then maybe have the city step in and pay and take the next step of, you know, attach it to the property.
Were they given notice? They, that's, okay.
Our, our ordinance does not require notice.
Because Stan, you have email addresses for every rental property, right?
One of the easiest-
So you could forward all those by email.
And also all the photographic documentation. I would obviously add something to it.
And the ordinance or something.
Exactly, that spells out this is what happened. This is the ordinance that it was done under. This is the expectation.
Bill them, I'd bill them. I mean, I think that-
Stan, I'm comfortable with whatever process you develop. I just want to make sure that it's in writing so that we don't forget.
That's a good idea, yeah.
And so long as you have a reasonable approach to this that protects the city and leaves us in good stead with the service provider, who is our service provider that does sidewalks?
Hawkeye.
Hawkeye?
Same as our streets.
And then gives the property owner some opportunity to react, that would be, that would be good.
Yep. Okay.
That's agreeable with everyone, yep. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't know.
And just share your procedures with us at the next meeting, that way it's-
He just did, sort of.
What?
I said, he just did.
I'll, I'll do it in writing now, so we can put it into the institutional memory here.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
22, that's not too bad. What, what's your thoughts?
Was it 22, 26, 22, somewhere in there?
Something in the 20s.
Yeah, 20-something.
Higher or less?
They're not cheap. They're not, these, you might, you might end up having some people in front of you at the next council meeting because of this.
Okay, then send us the ordinance and-
I will, when that happens, I'll make sure you have the documentation and-
I, um-
What happened?
Yeah.
Probably more expensive because-
I mean, we saved a lot of people from personal lawsuit lawsuits that day.
Whatever.
Okay.
Because you, I mean, at a certain point, you'll have to vote to assess it to the taxes, right? Yeah, which they have an option at that point to contest it, so.
Anything else?
Please mow your lawn.
Okay, thank you, Stan, and thank you, Virginia. Now we'll go to Sylvia's discussion of city sidewalk repair plan options.
All right. After we had the MPOJC talk about the comprehensive plan this couple of weeks ago, I received a number of comments from residents who feel that it is completely unfair that they are bearing the brunt of repairing sidewalks that more, that other people use in lieu of themselves. And some of them are hit with a sidewalk in their backyard and a sidewalk in their front yard. And they want to see this council work for equalization of sharing the cost related to those repairs and maintenance. And I don't quite disagree that, you know, I happen to live on Ridgeview where I don't have sidewalks, and that's a huge convenience, but there's a big burden on a number of other residents and properties. And I was looking at prior council meetings, and we have not picked up an issue where we instructed the city engineer to postpone sending out letters for street sidewalk improvements. And I think it's time that we pick that up and that we come up with an action plan or various options that we need to look at because we have July 1 as our next budget year, and there's an opportunity where we could start making good on our use of, of, what is it? Streets and sidewalks money that is in the budget from the, the TIF from One University Place to help us repair long stretches of sidewalks. That was the big hangup. This council decided to put a pause on the, on the maintenance schedule, so let's take care of that. Let's put the engineer to work now that he doesn't have Olive Court to worry about and come up with an action plan on that, so.
So you use the affordable housing set aside money to fund sidewalk repair?
Yeah, and we changed the designation to that it's no longer affordable housing. This council agreed to call it, reschedule it, Streets and Sidewalks. And with that in mind, I asked Josiah for an availability schedule so that we can have a working session where this council is educated on what it means to have sidewalks in terms from an engineering perspective. Why is it that the, you know, the patching per-square approach was, was postponed? And what, what are the best practices around this? I have challenged Josiah to go holistic on, on this project. I have asked him to look bigger. I don't want him to look at this as just a sidewalk. I want him to look at it as a tree issue, a sidewalk issue, a potential integration for water runoff issue, a potential integration for using new materials that are environmentally friendly and all sorts of other things. So I think it's your turn to also tell him what it is that you have an angle on for sidewalks and what else it means. But I'm asking everyone to think bigger than a sidewalk, and let's see if we can't start doing something.
Well, I, my position is that it's certain, certainly shouldn't be an individual property owner's responsibility. I think, I think it's a city issue.
Yeah.
I, I do.
So Josiah is available to discuss that.
Yeah.
So he's available Tuesday, May 21, May 28th, May 30th, June 3rd, and June 4th. From there, it would take him about a month to come up with options. And I, when asked if this would pose a problem for us contracting for any repairs in the third quarter, he didn't think it would be a problem or even in the late fourth, in the early part of the fourth quarter.
Yeah, I think the city should pay for sidewalk repairs going forward. Why don't we just ask him to prioritize? I mean, it should be done like a whole block at a time, not the chunk, chunk.
But he wants to hear what issues you all have. I mean, I, I know where I, I have very strong opinions about where we need to go with this.
Can, can he identify like what's the most needed block for replacement?
He wants to talk to us about all of that, but he wants to bring a structured program so that it's good for three, five years out. So we're not running into this piecemeal approach to fixing-
This patching, patching.
It's not even just patching, it's just telling him, stop, go, stop, go, think bigger, think less, think more. He wants a, I want a comprehensive program, and he agreed with it.
So you're talking a special meeting, I'm sorry?
Just a work session.
A work session?
A work session.
Special meeting, work session.
And he's available on these dates, and I-
Is there a time on those dates?
I anticipate no more than two hours. I think that's a lot of time, but we don't have to use all of that time.
Well, it can't be the 30th.
Okay.
Because that's our open house for the police chief and UHPD.
Sylvia said 21st or 28th?
You said the 21st, what else did you say?
28th, and June 3rd and June 4th.
If I can make any of those work.
June 3rd and 4th is Tuesday, Wednesday. The 28th.
I can do 21, 28.
Are we talking May or June?
May. And then June 3rd and June 4th.
I can do the 28th, I have something 29th and 30th.
I can do the 28th. I'm sorry, what dates?
28.
Nick? Now, this is a working session, so if you don't feel strongly, that's, that's fine. I mean, we're eventually going to rehash the same information in a written report.
I can't do the 28th, but if everybody else can. Did you say what time?
No, I figured we can just use the same time marker, 7:00 PM.
Okay. Otherwise, we have June 3rd or 4th.
And that's why Josiah gave you this map today to give you an idea of what streets are here. And I think what's also important are additional maps, the watershed maps that would be helpful. And then, and then other factors that we need to-
And a tree map would be helpful.
A tree map would be helpful, sure.
So did the council want to do 28th even though Nick's not here, or?
I, I'll come if it's like a rainout of a, one of the many-
Oh, I see. Okay.
Way it's going, it's a rainout.
Sure, okay.
Okay, so we'll try for the 28th, maybe you can come later.
Yeah, yeah.
28th at 7 o'clock, May 28th, which is a Tuesday.
Work session?
It's a work session. Okay. And then-
So with that in mind, just, I guess, the same thing. Start thinking of the issues that you see around sidewalks and how we can come up with a one, three, and five-year-out plan. All right. That's done. The next issue is discussion of city streets, street trees, public safety, and removal costs. I know that there's been some changes that are taking place on the public right-of-way, and there has been some concern that's been expressed to me that, that some of the trees that were removed for safety reasons should have really been picked up by the city. And my concern there is if that is the case, then I think we've had at least two other instances in the past where I've been on council where all we've done is sent corrections. But we just have to identify which trees were a result of a safety issue versus an aesthetic. I just want this tree out. And then just reverse out that transaction, refunding the property owners their removal costs. And, and then we need to make sure I looked at the ordinances, and they're not clear where, you know, it's very clear in the ordinances that the property owner bears the cost, but it's not reflecting whatever updates the industry is aware of.
Steve can comment on some of that, because you have in the past about when, when is it cities and when is it the property owner's responsibility?
But let me finish my thought. My thought is because we have some budget money left for this fiscal year, let's use whatever the fiscal year remaining budget is for the tree board budget by, by reversing out these costs. And then start July 1 with whatever new, you know, forward-thinking action plan we had for the Olive Court trees. And that, then that way, it's a, it's a neat closure for corrective action that's not too late. And, and then making any corrections to the ordinance system. Go ahead. Steve?
I just want Steve to review the policy that we followed.
So the, the city's ordinances provide that the, that the budding property owner, the adjoining property owner is responsible for the care and maintenance of trees and shrubs in the city right-of-way. It's not the city's responsibility by ordinance, it's the property owner's responsibility. In the past, the only times I've been aware that the city has paid all or part of the costs of removing a tree in those circumstances is where it's, it's either dead, in which case the Iowa code says you can't make the budding property owner pay to remove it. And, and so I know there's been instances where the city has paid for that removal. And there've been other cases where it was, you know, the tree was partly dead, and so the city paid part of the removal cost. I know there were several instances where the city paid, I think, half on the basis that it needed to go. It wasn't completely dead. The city didn't take the position that, hey, it's not dead, you do it, the city said we'll pay for half of it. But in terms of, but those are the only times I've known that the city has, has paid for that cost. Otherwise, I think it's always been the property owner's responsibility, and that's what, that's what the ordinance says.
That's fine, but there's been changes, and I, you know, I figured I'm not surprised that so much of our home rule has been eroded in the last two years. Doesn't surprise me that this went by the wayside too. So I just want to make sure that we are handling corrective action quickly and move on. What?
Do you have a list?
I'm wondering who has the list of all of the different tree owners that we contacted? With the tree board?
Yeah, we had like a major removal project after Mark Vitash did the tree risk survey. And on those, homeowners paid half of the removal and sent that money back into Lori. And then a couple months after that, in conversation with Mark Vitash, he told me that cities can't do that, the cities have to pay 100% of the removal. So we pay 100% of the removal now. And I don't think there is money left in the tree board budget because they have three trees that are, need to be taken out this spring that they're making arrangements on.
Can they be delayed?
One of them can't, for sure.
If not, we'll have to do it out of the next budget year.
I'm sorry, none of them can, they're pretty dangerous.
Okay, then we'll just have to wait until July 1, but we need to start working on a letter.
I mean, how far back are you looking to go, though, like?
Whenever the change became effective, and that's what I'm trying to track down.
So, yeah, we, we found out that we weren't supposed to do that, so we never did it again.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean that the prior ones that we did were appropriate, and that's, that's all I want, and I'm not-
I'm saying, how many years back are you going to go on that?
However many years we weren't supposed to be doing that.
That's forever. I mean, we, the city-
Okay, then let's do forever, and then just call it quits and not do it ever again, which goes back to, can we put it in writing?
I don't know where you're going to find the money for that.
Oh, well, we have a new budget coming in, July 1, which means we have to reprioritize. And that's my second, my second comment on this. So you would rather be the council that allow-
I'm asking you a question.
No, I will-
I am not saying I would rather be anything.
No, no, well, I don't know, you're talking to Virginia, and your question isn't being addressed to me.
You're looking at me, you're, where do you get the cost of that? Where do you have the record of that?
I'll work with Lori to find out what we have, and then back up that way because I know that there's been different, Virginia, you were out from tree board for two years? Or were you in while you were, when you took the year off, a term off?
I was on tree board from when I left council to when I got back on council.
Okay, so you would have some knowledge of these trees if we were to look at some records and figure that out. Okay. All right, so we'll figure it out, but my question consensus from this council is, are you going to be the council that stands by running your city properly or correcting actions?
I stand by when you learn that you're doing something wrong, you correct it, and you keep going.
Yeah, but you-
I don't know how far, how many years back we can go on that.
That's, that's fine. I'm not going to, I'm going to go back, where let's find out what, what the back looks like.
Okay.
The look-back period, what that looks like. And let's figure it out and, and come up with some guidelines because this isn't the first time that a, something like this has happened. An example was the police department was inappropriately collecting some fees, and we had to reverse them. But that council certainly said, put their foot down, said, we don't care how long ago you were inappropriately correcting this stuff, we're going to reverse it all out. If you look at some of the warrants around December or November, two years ago, maybe three, you'll see a whole list of people with the same amount of money, and it's because of that. So, but I'm, I say let's correct and, and move on.
Sylvia, can I suggest on these items that you list here, just in the future? I don't know what they mean when you talk to them, and I'm not sure it's fair to the council that you, I mean, I think these ideas need to be discussed, but it's the first time as they hear them at this meeting.
That's fine, open meeting.
And if you can prepare a report-
A report would be nice.
I, you know, I don't own the issue.
Then, then they'd have some time to look into it, you know, come back, and I'm just suggesting that.
You know, I made myself available on Monday. I let you all know that I arrived on Sunday and-
You did not let me know.
You received the same email everybody else did.
What did it say?
Check your emails, it was open invitation.
Sylvia, for heaven's sakes, file a report, give us an explanation of what you're doing. That's what we've talked about in this resolution.
I just, when you talk about like opening up a can of worms, I mean, you're going to have, like, you're going to go back 20 years? It's been the city, it was the city policy for decades.
I have no idea, I don't know what records we have.
People have died that paid for half their tree removal, you know?
Virginia, I don't know what we, I don't know what we have for records.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go on to discussion of football game day.
Right. That's, that's what I thought, maybe once or twice at most.
I think maybe we generally had people pay for it themselves and come to the city for reimbursement, right? Okay.
I, I don't know. I don't know.
Anyway.
I'm just glad that we.
Report out. It would be helpful.
You know, I submitted my agenda items on time. I submitted everything on time. And I did, I shared it with all of you on a Thursday from Scotland. So I did extraordinarily well in, in making sure that my peer counselors knew what agenda items would be discussed. I'm not done with the city streets. I'm not done. Public safety is an issue. And as we're coming into the summer months, the tree canopies are going to be obscuring and blocking light, and I think we need to make an effort this season to make sure that we're trimming some of that canopy so that light will filter down, so that as pedestrians at night or in the middle of the morning are walking, they have extra.
It's a safety issue.
Right, so that's safety. So.
I just want to remind you that we just did that round of trimming last year, and most trimming cycles, you put on a five-year cycle.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's on the radar because it's, it's a safety issue. All right, so discussion of football game day for 2019. That was discussed at the last meeting, that it was tabled and brought in, brought in for discussion, and I wanted to hear what concerns or issues you might all have. But I think it's a healthy practice to add this to the agenda every football season just because you don't know what's new and what should be changing.
I don't want to make any changes to football this year.
I haven't heard any problems. I've heard, you know, there were some private bodies that were visible, I guess, or not removed. But otherwise, I haven't heard, I haven't heard much.
The only concern that, there's two concerns that I received. One is, I think we had a rainy season, and I remember our housing inspector, Stan Lavermon, sending out, you know, a question to council about what to do about the tread marks, but you're here, maybe you can speak to that note that you sent out. I received a picture from a resident on, on a property that had tread, tread mark, or tire, tire marks on the property. And so my concern is as we're getting more global warming rain, is that going to be an issue that we're going to be concerned about and that we should probably be monitoring for? And that is asking people to re-sod or take appropriate measures to, you know, mitigate the muddiness of a yard that is used by football game day.
And John wanted to comment.
No, that was issue number one. And then the second issue came about with Olive Court. Before we knew that Olive Court could not be accomplished this year, the question becomes, you are repairing streets and curbs and the right-of-way plantings, and you're trying to make that area beautiful. What are you going to do about big, heavy vehicles that are being invited onto football game day parking, and how will council respond and react to conditions of deterioration? So I think that's at least another season away, but it's a fair question to be asking who's going to bear the burden for those types of repairs that are being originated from heavy usage on football game day. And so, John, if you want to comment, you're welcome to the podium.
Thank you, John, for walking up.
Sorry, I'm talking so much. I just, I'll make it quick. Sorry, it's late. I don't think as a council you have any ground to stand on asking people to replace their yard with sod or anything like that when you're not fixing the roads currently. We're paying taxes as property owners here, and that money is going somewhere, but you're not repairing the roads or the sidewalks yet. So in that context, you can't ask a homeowner to then re-sod their yard because you don't like the aesthetic of it when you already are ignoring the ridiculously bad-looking streets. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. And so you want to, some discussion on that now, those two points?
Sure, just, right, because April right now, no, May, it'll be June next month. And then we're going to send out letters, a good neighbor letter. Are we not going to do a good neighbor reminder? I think we should. We have new, at least 50 new homes that were sold on University Heights, some away, some of which may want to do football game day parking and others that don't. We also have an issue with residents not being able to access University Heights that I think the chief should be involved and debriefed on, so maybe he can run interference with the, the university, because I think it's the athletics department's subcontractor that has prevented people from north of Melrose to access their neighborhoods. I myself have been made to go through Emerald and suffered the consequences of trying to make a left turn onto Benton. It's terrible. You can't get home. And I, I think we need to have better coordination. So I think our residents need to know that council is working for them, that we heard them the last time they raised these issues, and that we're working on them.
Last, last football season. Was that the university or Iowa City?
It was the university.
That deterred up on Emerald.
Yeah.
Everything down south to over to Benton.
That's right. I got detoured.
I did, too. I wonder who did it.
It's the university subcontractor.
That's right.
Because that was bad, really bad.
It is. And then it's worse when it's your street and you need to get back to your home and you're being told you can't. So I want our community to know that this council is on top of things. So I don't think it's a bad idea to send out another letter.
If it's going to happen, then we need to at least inform them by letter so that, you know.
I should be part of that discussion. I don't know if that's appropriate here, though.
No, we can, we can take it off and.
Yeah, it'd be great if you guys want to put a draft letter together, you know, based on kind of what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
The university has already, I mean, their plans are out there for what they're, what they're going to do pre and post-game traffic. And that's, that's all been decided. But I'll get that.
Okay, super. All right. So I hear consensus that we should take that offline, and we'll work with Chief Kelsey on university-related issues, and then maybe work on a letter. So I'll take on the letter and circulate it with all of you.
Well, we worked on that letter last time, if we're just talking about the football letter.
Yeah.
We just need a owner. Yeah. Right. So do you, so do we work on the body of the letter or, or what? Give us the letter, and then we'll see where it would fit as an update.
Yeah, if you just want to send out what you propose as a letter, I would give you that.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay.
And then we'll put appropriate agenda items on for June.
Right.
Then we'll put appropriate agenda items, Sylvia, for June.
Yeah, it'll still be the, the same.
From that.
And finally, verbal report for the finance chair. I am still continuing to go through the city's audit. It's a little bit more, it's not as, as easy to tackle. And, and I am benchmarking with a number of other cities that, that have policies and procedures that I think are worth evaluating by this council. So more on that coming.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, I received a couple of complaints that people have not been able to connect to the chief for a number of reasons. I'm wondering if the telephone system is ready to go, Lisa, and if the website is ready to go for, for that.
I don't know anything about the telephone system.
Okay.
The information is on the city website, and I believe he spoke about this in his report.
And you just communicated that to me. I need to reach out to the gentleman that you spoke about.
Mm-hmm. Not a problem.
And I'll follow up to see what number of his calling card he's trying to contact.
And there were other people well before him who were looking for how to connect with you, and they just didn't know. It's the stale link, so.
Nate was working on getting some refrigerator magnets printed up that have like the actual jack line that we want people calling to receive a reply versus calling the office phone that's not manned.
Correct.
Is that still?
I wasn't aware of the magnets.
In process?
The numbers that are on the webpages are correct. I don't know where, I don't know where that other number is coming from that they're calling direct.
It's like an old office line that used to get used a lot often or something.
I don't know. The new refrigerators don't let you put magnets on them. I don't know.
What?
I mean, I told Nate that my refrigerators do not accept magnets, but I don't know. I'm just saying, I think that's a thing of the past. I think we need to do more website and maybe, you know, in a newsletter and, you know.
Anyway, we need to.
That's what I told.
We need to get the number out that we, that people should be calling. I don't think it's been well distributed.
And.
Maybe you two can come up with a strategy for that.
Because that should be, especially to the residents of the University Heights, that should be communicated. It shouldn't be, I called somebody's cell phone who, who was an officer two years ago.
Yeah.
Was it part of the welcome letter that you, I don't know? I'll, I'll do some digging on that. I'll, I'll talk to the people who haven't been able to get in touch with me.
You mean the resident guy?
Right, because I, I ended up giving your cell phone number to someone.
We do it every other year.
Right, right.
You know, we have.
We have the numbers.
Well, and I would rather not, because I don't know when it's your personal time, and I don't want them bothering you. So.
I, you're right. We need to update information, but.
Maybe just a sheet about certain things like that.
Spoof.
Okay, so, and, and that's everything, Sylvia?
That's it, ma'am. Yeah, I think that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good, because.
PD jack number, right?
That is a day that they very well may need the police.
E-government. You sent around a report, Lisa?
That's it, and I'm not taking it.
Okay.
Lisa, I just did want to ask, I'm, I'm really excited about the new website. Do you guys have like a timeline of, of milestones that you can share with, with council as you're reporting? Kind of like the, check the, check the box for us?
I'll just tell you in my report what we've done. How's that? We expect it to be done in August, but we sort of have to work through each little thing right now. Civic Plus is working on their part, and then we have to look at it and see how we need to proceed from there.
Okay, all right.
Anything else for Lisa? Tomorrow morning is the University Heights Bike to Work Week breakfast. It's at 6:30 in the morning till about 9:00 AM, and we co-sponsor with Jeff's Bike and Ski. And they do a real nice breakfast bagel sandwich, and so everyone come out. If you're walking or biking, we will give you a free breakfast. Come out and see us tomorrow. I think the weather's supposed to be good tomorrow morning, so that's good. So are there any other announcements?
Citywide Garageville, June 8.
June 8, okay, that's good to know. Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone, for coming and staying so late.